Turn the lobby down. Test, 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 test. I think this, I think that's a bit better. That's good. Test one, two, three. Test one, two, three. Test one, two, three. Sound better? Mic test one, two, three. Mic test one, two, three. Mic test one, two, three. The gallery sounds a little low. Mic test one, two, three. 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 That seems better. Mic test. Mic test one, two, three. Mic test one, two, three.
Well, call me, actually we'll resume the meeting. We started at one o'clock. Sorry for the late starts of public meeting. We, as I said, we started the meeting at one o'clock, so we're still going here. So we do humbly acknowledge the land we live, learn, work, and play is Treaty Eight territory, Tristan Land is the Cree and Dene, and unced territory of the Maiti people. If anyone in attendance wishes to address council on any of the agenda items, please address, please see Legislative Services to my right, and please register to speak before the start of the agenda item. You'll have five minutes to present. Please introduce yourself and remain seated for questions. Moving on to consent agenda, if anyone may wish to remove any items from our consent agenda. I don't see any. Can someone make that motion? Counselor Weigl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the recommendations contained in items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.7, 5.8, 5.9, 5.10, and 5.11 be approved.
Thanks, Counselor Weigl, and thanks, Counselor Walker, for a second. Can I call for a vote? All in favor? Okay, how do you vote? Are you in favor? In favor? Thanks. That's carried unanimously. I'll let you get that report, get the next item, Counselor Bousier. Next, a report we had on Aging in Place update, like the Plan Development Services and Community Services, introduce your report, please. Not at this meeting. This is a special meeting. And... I guess you can... Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Amanda Owens, Director of Planning and Development Services, and with me this evening is Leslie Piercy, Communications and Engagement, and Janelle Flurry, Manager, Community Partnerships and Initiatives. Before proceeding, we want to thank the members of the community and partner organizations who kindly gave their time to provide feedback on this project. Hearing the voices of those who are experiencing aging alongside the organizations directly caring for and supporting older adults provided a strong foundation for this process. We would also like to thank members of the Advisory Committee on Aging, ACOA, for their ongoing involvement. For the purpose of this project, Aging in Place means aging in community with access to the right supports at the right time in the right place. Aging in Place is a, for the purpose of our project, Aging in Place is a facility as well as an approach to addressing broader community needs. Typically, a municipality does not develop this type of project. The municipality has possession of the land and committed funds, and the intention of this project is to assess the feasibility of an Aging in Place facility before we go to market, while also assessing general needs of our community. For clarity, today's recommendation do not propose to develop a facility. This is the first step to addressing if a facility will be built in the region. As we, as mentioned, the Aging in Place project has a long history. Starting in October of 2015, council approved $10.5 million in the capital budget to contribute to an Aging in Place project. The funds remained committed but unspent as no work has progressed on the project since then. However, in April of 2025, council unanimously passed the following motions: that administration engage with council's advisory committee on aging to collaborate on recommended next steps for the development of a proposed Aging in Place facility at the Willow Square, and that any next steps be inclusive of a community and relevant stakeholder engagement plan and updated feasibility study. And lastly, that an update on progress be presented to council by September 9th of 2025. In June of 2025, ownership of the Willow Square site was transferred to the municipality from the province. The municipality conducted public engagement during the spring and summer, followed by conducting a needs assessment. Today, we are in front of council to share our progress and next steps, which includes an approach to understanding private market interest. The RMWB's 2021 census shows an upward trend in the seniors demographic of 65 years and up across the region. The fastest growing was in residents aged 65 to 69, up to 20% since, up 20% since 2018. The next highest increase was amongst those 75 and older, which grew by 14%. The steady growth tells us that more families are staying and more people are choosing Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo for their retirement. As the population continues to age, the demand for housing services and programs tailored for seniors will only increase. The preliminary 2025 census results are showing a similar trend. The proposed project site is 1.63 acres of vacant land at the Franklin Avenue and Hospital Street intersection, next door to the existing Willow Square Continuing Care Center. The site is close to the public transit, retail, health, education, and community amenities. I'll now pass it over to Leslie.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to give an engagement overview, public engagement opportunities were available from May 21st through July 20, July 12th. In-person and online opportunities were available, and we did see some great participation on both. Three surveys were used as the main way to collect feedback from specific audiences, one being the 65 years and older, those with aging family members, and the general public. Online, the project page, rmwb.ca/aginginplace, hosted on the RMWB's platform, Participate Wood Buffalo, received over 1,600 views and more than 1,100 unique visitors. In total, 611 surveys were completed, which includes both printed and online. Printed hard copy surveys were made available at events, rural municipal offices, and community partner locations. Residents could also complete a survey by phone by calling Pulse. Together, this shows strong engagement and wide interest in an Aging in Place solution in Fort McMurray Wood Buffalo. Administration engaged with 10 community partners that support seniors, families, and caregivers through one-on-one meetings and interviews. The 10 partners included Alberta Health Services, the Alzheimer's Society of Canada, Golden Years Society, Multicultural Association of Wood Buffalo, NISTAWAU Association Friendship Center, St. Aidan Society, Support Services Wood Buffalo, Wood Buffalo Housing, Wood Buffalo Pride, and the YMCA. Administration also hosted an information session at the Golden Years Society with upwards of 100 participants that provided meaningful, meaningful feedback for the project. Members of the team also went back at a later date for follow-up conversations. Beyond these discussions, administration attended three community events with an engagement table. St. Aidan's Tailgate Tuesday, which saw 130 participants, council's luncheon for seniors and elders with 280 attendees, and the Anzac Seniors Luncheon with 130 attendees. From the survey, feedback, from the survey feedback, several themes emerged. One of the strongest themes was the need for more senior and 55-plus housing options. Respondents frequently highlighted retirement communities, single-level homes, bungalows, and cottages, with these mentioned 141 times across the three surveys. We also heard that some seniors with higher incomes felt that affordable housing would not provide the lifestyle or type of facility they were seeking. The second key theme was affordability. Two-thirds of survey respondents said that affordable housing was very important. Among those with aging family members, nearly 60% identified cost of living as the biggest challenge for seniors to live independently. Across all surveys, 70% of respondents said they or their aging family members planned to stay in Fort McMurraywood Buffalo as they age. Affordability concerns were mentioned 130 times in open-ended responses across the surveys. This tells us that any future model for an Aging in Place facility must carefully balance affordability with quality and supports. The third key theme was accessibility and age-friendly design. 60% of respondents expect to move from their current accommodation within the next five to 10 years due to age, mobility, or the need of supports. Accessibility and design features were mentioned in 236 open-ended feedback responses. 77% of respondents identified medical services such as a clinic, pharmacy, or onsite care as most important. Programs and recreation was rated most important by 51% of respondents, followed by services like laundry, housekeeping, communal kitchens, dine-in meals, and independent supports. The fourth theme was the support services and community connection. Barriers to support was mentioned 215 times in the open-ended feedback, in relation to lack of availability, lack of awareness, long wait times, transportation challenges, and gaps in both medical services and rural supports. The final theme was the need for diverse housing options with multiple levels of care. 85% of survey respondents said they would stay in the region or relocate here if more housing and care options were available. The need for a broader spectrum of care was mentioned 209 times, including independent living, assisted living, transitional housing, Aging in Place facilities, hospice, and specialized dementia care.
Administration conducted detailed research to provide a baseline understanding of concepts for the design and operation of an Aging in Place facility that may be presented by the private sector for our community. We examined facilities of different sizes, service levels, and operating models in Alberta, elsewhere in Canada, the U.S., Europe, and across Europe that provide for seniors and older adults. Feasibility studies are generally made up of two main components. As part of council's motion, administration worked on a feasibility study, which included a focus on a needs assessment. It would also include a cost-benefit analysis. Administration completed the needs assessment and identified gaps in services and housing for seniors and older adults. The assessment is based on partner and community feedback alongside demographic information collected. The cost-benefit analysis is typically the responsibility of the private sector to ensure a project is viable and profitable in terms of both financial and social capital.
As mentioned on the previous slide, a needs assessment is an important component to this project. So based on the current needs that we have identified, being independent was one of those top needs. Seniors and those approaching retirement age expressed a desire to remain as independent as possible, with the option to access medical and home care services as needed. Housing choice, a lack of appropriate, accessible, and financially attainable housing options for older adults 55 plus, and the lack of choice for seniors 65 plus were most frequently mentioned as key gaps in the housing provision during the needs assessment. Inadequate facilities for couples with different care levels and overabundance of one-bedroom units were mentioned as barriers to housing choices. Affordability, affordability is an issue that refers to gaps in both housing and support services. The rising cost of living is a concern for many seniors. Most funded support services like subsidized housing are based on income. However, publicly funded services do not cover all needs that would keep seniors living home longer. Middle-income older adults and seniors may not be eligible for subsidized housing or publicly funded services, support services, and pay out of pocket or rely on family or volunteers for these services. This includes home maintenance, snow removal, and many other things. There is also a gap between the provision of supportive living and continuing care facilities for those with mobility challenges and other disabilities. Currently, there are no units wholly designed for accessibility in Wood Buffalo that would enable people with disabilities or mobility issues to live relatively independently with help from onsite support services. Existing seniors' residents, including Rotary House, are intended for independent living for seniors without serious mobility issues. Partner organizations report elder abuse is a critical issue. Families living with a senior should have access to support services that meet them where they are at to help reduce the strain they feel caring for an older relative. For example, respite care, daycare, and transportation to programs and events not only benefit seniors' wellbeing, it is preventative of elder abuse. Other key findings that have been captured in the needs assessment include a need for medical facilities, expanding and enhancing support services for the gap serving older adults between 55 to 64, transportation challenges, and access to information. The needs assessment or the needs that have been identified through this project will continue to inform the municipality's approach to being an age-friendly community.
Through engagement, through engagement, feedback was collected for the design consideration of the potential Aging in Place facility at the Willow Square site, and here is the wish list. People prefer a range of different-sized housing units, including apartments or condos. Ideally, an Aging in Place facility would offer a combination of independent and supportive living, while accessibility and security features were identified as priorities. Flexible program space would allow for a range of activities, programs, and events to meet changing needs. Common areas such as communal dining room, lounge, and community kitchen help reduce social isolation and foster community. A variety of onsite activities and amenities were identified as being desirable and contributing to residents' quality of life. These included a gym, prayer and smudge room, theater space, a swimming pool, private meeting rooms for visiting families, and parking. Some amenities may be open to the public, such as hair salon, coffee shop, convenience store, post office, and pharmacy. Green spaces, walking paths, gathering spaces, and seating areas were highlighted as important features, contributing to residents' mental health, physical, physical activity, and provide opportunities for social interaction. Although residents are downsizing, they still need space. It's important that units have flexible living space, are spacious, have kitchen and laundry, an accessible bathroom, natural light, private outdoor spaces, storage space, internet service, and 24 hours, 24/7 emergency call and alert system. A main takeaway for the potential facility design is that it should not look or feel institutional. It should be a home-like environment for residents. In consideration of this project moving forward, the following council motions are, the following council recommendations are proposed: that administration prepare a request for expression of interest or, or a request for, for information for the development and operation of a future Aging in Place facility at the Willow Square site by fourth quarter of 2025, and that, and that the municipality allocate or contribute up to $10.5 million toward the cost of construction of an Aging in Place facility on the Willow Square site. Should council wish to proceed with the recommendations, the following next steps will be undertaken by administration. In quarter four of 2025, administration will issue a request for expression of interest to gauge private sector interest in building and operating an Aging in Place facility. This step will help administration understand possible approaches to development and delivery models, which may inform the scope of work for a future request for proposal. Market awareness could take place at the ICSC Retail and Development Conference this fall in Toronto in October. Following this, administration would aim to prepare a formal request for proposal in quarter two or quarter three of 2026, at which point, potential developers are evaluated through a competitive process, and if successful, a proponent would be selected. Administration will continue to work with the ACOA committee and keep council informed as we move forward. This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Quickly, with the, all the information, engagement, and what people want to see and what they want to have, a lot of them don't really fall under an Aging in Place facility, but is this, and the examples we had from different places you looked at all over the world, basically, is that lot even big enough to have what, what we need?
Through the chair, to the question, and feel free to jump in if you'd like to add anything. We collected a lot of information throughout the process of meeting with the public and key stakeholder organizations, and also throughout the needs assessment, there was other information that we came across, looking at other examples across the world, really. And we did see that there was an interest in sort of a variety of different models. So in some cases, people were describing more independent living units, like think, think of bungalows or those cottage-style developments, which would require a larger piece of land. But we also had comments being made around a condo-style or apartment-style living where there's multi-levels. For the sake of Willow Square, I couldn't confirm in the meeting, because it would, it would actually have to be looked at in terms of a development model. But the likelihood of the cottage-style developments, it likely wouldn't be large enough to accommodate enough units that we would need for our region. In the case of Willow Square, most likely, we would, we would anticipate being a multi-unit type of development. But having said that, there could be a market for an additional area in which there would be that cottage-style development.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, thank you. Does council have any other questions? I'm not seeing any. Thank you. I'm for Delux, have Carolyn Ivansio. And friends? And Carolyn, just state your name for the record, and you have five minutes to present, and just remain seated for questions, please. Rectangle button.
All right. So good afternoon. My name is Carolyn Ivansio. I am the Chair of the ACOA, or Advisory Council on Aging, and have been a member of the ACOA for the past four years. I represent the Seniors Resource Committee, and I'll let you introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Moses, and I'm on the committee for Aging in Place. The Seniors Resource Committee encompasses several organizations that provide service delivery or support seniors in Wood Buffalo. I'm also employed with Primary Care Alberta, previously AHS. I work with health promotion and public health. I have also been a member of the community for the past 40 years, and I'm proud to call Fort McMurray my home. Thanks for the opportunity to provide feedback on the Aging in Place facility. This is a unique opportunity to create a space that fills a gap and addresses some of our seniors' housing needs. I say "some" as this project will not meet the needs of all seniors, but I'm hopeful that the RMWB engagement strategy will provide some insight into the highest identified needs. This should be seen as a beginning to more discussion as our aging population continues to grow. We have seen a significant increase in our senior population, and we need to be proactive in ensuring that seniors that have contributed to our region have access to housing as they age. The Wood Buffalo Age Friendly Work Plan highlights ACOA's vision of aging with dignity. The work plan is based on the eight domains identified by the World Health Organization. ACOA is committed to ensuring that supportive policies, services, and programs are in place to enable seniors to live, to age and live with respect, purpose, and dignity. Domains identified as priorities include housing, community supports, health services, respect, and social inclusion. The Aging in Place facility aligns with continuing to build an age-friendly Wood Buffalo. ACOA was initially introduced to the Aging in Place concept in April 2025, advising us that the RMWB had secured land for an Aging in Place facility. We continued to be part of the conversations and received updates from the RMWB at monthly ACOA meetings. The RMWB Aging in Place team ensured that ACOA was involved in the process and were open to recommendations and suggestions for an optimal engagement process. I did take the opportunity to be part of the process for the Golden Years engagement session on June the 6th, and it was well-attended. Lots of conversations happened. The Aging in Place engagement team have been exceptional in providing updates and being transparent. ACOA is looking forward to continued collaborations on this project. There are many considerations and best practices that should be implemented. These include collaboration with key stakeholders, inclusive and diverse space, accessibility, social and physical space for connection and activity, adaptable and flexible space to meet changing needs, access to outdoor space, balcony, or raised gardens, a sense of belonging, feeling valued and purposeful, access to support services. We need to have diverse housing options available for seniors in Fort McMurray and our rural communities. 55-plus housing, duplexes, condos, cottages that fill the gaps in our region. ACOA will continue to be involved in this unique opportunity to support seniors' housing that will allow our residents to not only work, play, but also stay in Wood Buffalo.
Thanks, Carolyn. Thanks, Deborah. Quick question before I go to my colleagues. Right now, with your group, are you, are we short space at this time?
With what? What do you mean by short space for?
Like, are we, this is the space needed right now for seniors right at this time?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, and I think from some of the data that the engagement sessions provided, that the coming years are going to be even more space required.
For sure. Yeah, seeing the coming years, we definitely have an issue. Does anyone have any, any other questions? I'm not seeing any, so thank you both.
Thank you.
Next, we have Leona Bousier. And Leona, just say your name for the record, please, and you have five minutes to present. Just remain seated for questions after, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Leona Bousier. I am the Executive Director of St. Aidan Society. We're a senior-serving organization. Before I begin, I just want to share that I have previously submitted a detailed four-page report to Amanda Owens in planning, and I shared a copy with you, Mayor Bowman. That report reflects dialogue that I've had with social workers, care providers, service providers, and others who work directly with seniors across the entire province. I've since had a thoughtful and meaningful conversation with Amanda as well about the vision for this project, and I'm here tonight because I continue to feel strongly about the importance of getting this right. I want to begin by acknowledging the important first steps that you have all taken in recognizing the growing needs of our senior population, and your commitment to developing a facility that will support older adults aging with dignity, independence, and connection. For you guys to know, by 2030, our country will see the largest population of older adults as the last of the baby boomers turn 65, and it's anticipated to be the most seniors we will ever see, because subsequent generations don't have as many children. And we, as a community and as a province and a country, are not ready for this. So I'm here tonight to speak about more than bricks and mortar. I'm here to talk about a vision. The 1.3-acre site adjacent to Willow Square Continuing Care Center really presents a once-in-a-generation opportunity. With the $10.5 million already allocated, this is not a small project. This is a chance to fundamentally shape how we support aging in our region, not just for today's seniors, but for those of us who hope to grow old and are growing old in this community. But this opportunity comes with a responsibility, and I want to implore council to please take a thoughtful, measured, and strategic approach, and not rush into decisions, but to ask, what are we really trying to achieve? Fort McMurray is aging, and our seniors want to stay in the community that they built. They want to live near family, in familiar surroundings, with access to services that support not only their physical needs, but also their emotional, cultural, and social wellbeing. Aging in place is more than just a housing strategy. It's a community model that allows older, older adults to reign, remain connected, active, and respected. It prevents premature entry into facility care. It relieves pressure on our healthcare system, but most importantly, it preserves dignity. And this project needs to reflect that. You're not just building a facility, you're building a standard of care. And through dozens of conversations with frontline social workers, care providers, and community advocates, I've heard consistent themes and and community advocates, I've heard consistent themes and needs that cannot be met by traditional housing or a one-size-fits-all approach. The best-practice Aging in Place model includes a continuum of care, from independent living to assisted and memory care, universal and adaptive design, so people can stay as their mobility or health changes, communal and culturally responsive spaces that support indigenous elders, newcomers, LGBTQ2S+ seniors, and all equity-deserving groups, outdoor areas, transportation access, strong community programming that combats isolation and supports mental wellness, and above all, a model that empowers residents and doesn't institutionalize them. This is not just aspirational. These models exist. You have $10.5 million that's allocated so far, and that puts you in a really strong position to leverage that money if you use a private builder. You can ensure that accessibility and affordability are non-negotiables. You can fund critical services. You could support culturally-inclusive design and trauma-informed spaces. You can build infrastructure that allows this facility to truly integrate with Willow Square, creating a seamless continuum of care. Or you may decide that Willow Square is not the place to build this. I don't know, and I suspect neither do you yet. Hence my request for a very thoughtful and strategic approach. I know there's urgency. My team at St. Aidan sees it every day, and we currently have a two-month waitlist to help people. It is desperate times, but there's no question about it. This urgency can't lead to shortsightedness, and I respectfully ask council to not default to the quickest or easiest path. Please take your time and do this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Very much appreciated. And actually, for the record, I didn't know you didn't send that to everybody. I thought it was, I didn't know it was just me. Your four-page.
Oh, sorry.
I probably would have asked to share it. My question just is, so what I see from engagement, what I see from the need, is almost two different things. We have the Willow Square, where we talk about a multi-level facility that's built there, but also see what the community wants and what the needs are, is almost another neighborhood, like individual housing, whether it's condos, fourplexes, cottage-style. It's almost two different things we're looking at here. So my only question is, is that what you see as well with the seniors in the community? That there's not just one, an option of Willow Square is going to be the, is going to solve the problems, putting something there? Is it Willow Square and something else?
It could be, I know overwhelmingly, across the country, seniors want to stay in their homes.
Yeah.
So they need the supports that help them stay in their home. That's not possible for everybody, so they don't want to move a lot. But 1.3 acres is not very big.
No, and that's.
So one of the builders told me it equates to probably 20 units, is what I was told. So I don't know if Amanda got that information too, but it's very, it's not a lot of units.
No, and that's why I looked at it, maybe this is two projects.
Yeah, possibly.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Doger, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Thank you very much, Lana, for your success that I see over a decade. Good on you, St. Aidan. Great job. Please keep doing it. My question is, the Willow Square facility, do you supervise presently those who are the bad cases or not?
Through the chair to Counselor Doger. No, that's Alberta Health Services. Is that what he?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Counselor Doger. Counselor Bousier?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair, to my, because you didn't share the paperwork with your brother, and you only shared it with Director Owens, and the mayor, I have a couple of questions. I guess you've obviously forgot more about seniors than I'll ever know, so, but there are people out there that get confused, Luana, with the different models. Like, we talked about it a couple of days ago. You have Arabasca, and you have Rotary House, and then you have Continuing Care, and now we're looking at the Aging in Place. Can you give a brief description of each, so people understand what, how this Aging in Place is going to differ than the other three levels of housing that the seniors?
Through the chair to Counselor Bousier. I don't know what it's going to look like because a decision I don't think has been made yet.
No.
But I will answer your other question. Legion Manor and Arabasca are independent senior housing. They pay 30% of their income, and there's a maximum cap, which I'm not sure what it is. That's supported by the province. So the province pays to Wood Buffalo, those are operated by Wood Buffalo Housing. The province pays to Wood Buffalo Housing the balance of whatever it's worth. If they pay 300 and it's worth a thousand, province gives them $700 a month per unit. That's limited, so there's lots of collaboration that needs to happen with various allied system partners, including health, housing, all of them. Rotary House is also independent, but it's got some support to it. So they have meals and some laundry, those kind of things. And then Willow Square is Continuing Care, so high needs, and then, like, memory care where Dad was, right? Like, the cottages for dementia, Alzheimer's, and then other levels of Continuing Care. So whatever council decides to authorize to be built, could meet any one of those, expand any one of those services, or have something else? I don't know. More just independent living with support? Or you guys may decide to take your $10.5 million and create a program that supports seniors in their home with some of it, like providing maintenance or supporting agencies? That sounds self-serving, I don't mean, but we have an Age Well at Home program at St. Aidan, supporting organizations or agencies that can continue to support them to age in their homes. Like, cutting the lawn, mowing the grass, taking leaves out of the gutter. Those are all things that put seniors at risk when they're climbing on ladders, but it's what they need to maintain their home, or furnace goes, those things. So you guys may decide you want to do that with your $10.5 million. I don't know.
Okay, and the reason I ask is, I think I understand that the various models you described. I guess my follow-up question is, how many doors do you think were short when it comes to all three? If you combined, given your studies and your discussions, if you look at Rotary House, I believe Rotary House is probably full.
Correct.
Arabasca is full. Can you see all three models being in one location? Can you have an Aging in Place? Can you have the independent living? Can you have the Rotary House in one building or two buildings on the same plot of land? Is that something that's done in other parts of the country?
With Willow Square as part of it?
Yeah, well, whether it's Willow Square, or Franklin Avenue, or Parsons, can you have a model which houses the Aging in Place folks, independent living folks, Rotary House folks, like, all under one roof?
That's the ideal model of Aging in Place, that you, basically, all your services are in a neighborhood? I think that ship might have sailed for this community, but I'm not sure. Like, we have housing spread throughout, like, unless the municipality started operating land around Alberta Drive, which, yeah, like, I don't know how you could do that there, or you went to North Parsons or something.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it has to be on that particular site. I'm just wondering if you can put the different housing needs under one roof. And obviously, the lack of square footage on that site, you'd obviously have to go vertical. And is that something that?
Vertical.
Go ahead.
It's not advised to go vertical for Aging in Place.
But even if you have the elevators and everything else, can you not go vertical? Because, I mean, if you're.
It's not best practice.
Okay. Because once you start, you know, one floor, it's, the site becomes much larger.
Correct, yeah.
I think that was it. Just, I guess, do you know, just off the top of your head, how many units were short? If you look at all three levels? Is it 1,000 doors? 500?
I don't know. If you're throwing out numbers, I don't know. I really, I don't. I think the, I think an assessment needs to be done to figure that out, and it's ever-changing. Like, as I said, the population by 2030 is going to explode, and as Director Owens pointed out too, in the stats of our aging population here, it's growing exponentially here too. So I think that's something to consider, but I think it needs to be looked at, for sure, so it can be got right.
Okay, are we, just one last question. Are we short of the housing in our rural areas as well?
There is some really incredible facilities in the rural areas, but I don't think it meets all their needs by any stretch.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Bousier. Counselor McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And first of all, Luana, it's nice to see you. You were smiling, all the work you do for the seniors, all the people around you at St. Aidan's. And I guess the first question would be, no doubt, just want to comment, we must have one of the nicest senior facilities that Chief Jim Bousier and his councilman have community built out on the river, especially with the fireplace you overlook the river. I don't know if it's something like that, but it's just supposed to show you that seniors deserve to be around the, you know, facilities that we all have. In that regard, are we short, like, company services that, you know, help the seniors stay at home longer? And is there room for, like, economic development to maybe, maybe to highlight that need in our community? As other, like, I agree, going back to Lance, I agree with him often, like, around the city, around, you know, even like Barrehead and West Dock and those places, they have buildings, I didn't see any buildings went up past five or six floors, but is there more we could do, like, to keep seniors at home that we have now? And it seems like we're all headed towards that age where maybe you need some additional help, but are we short? I guess it's supports that, you know, commercially, that keeps seniors at home, and how could we advocate for that?
Through the chair to Counselor McGrath. Yes, we're absolutely short services for older adults across the region, and particularly in the rural areas where they don't have independent agencies providing services directly to seniors.
Okay, and I realize, like, the set aim is that the seniors get, you know, the entry scale and availability of the units, but is there, I know you guys try ever see, but through our MLAs, that actually, where the money, most money comes from, that's not bought up by the good people in our community, is there any extra avenues that we could take to address the few places that are needed with some of the vacancies at Wood Buffalo Housing? Like, you know, like, maybe sometimes a special committee needs to be struck there. Because there are more seniors that are staying in our community, there's no doubt. There's a guy, Johnny, he walks from Rotary House to Walmart every day. He's not from here, but he ain't going anywhere, and he'd like to be able to take his wife there.
I didn't catch the question. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I am sorry. Luana, I'm sorry, talking a little fast, I realized that. Are there any, any ideas that you have to take the local committee and put a spotlight on the need for, like, almost immediately, a few places that seniors have so they can, they can stay and be joined by their spouse through, through the provincial government where most of that money comes from?
Through the chair to Counselor McGrath, there definitely needs to be some advocacy with the province to support an increased number of social housing options for older adults. In terms of the service provision, it's a matter of having agencies available to do the work.
Okay, well, thank you, Red, for all you do, and good to see you out there in the public. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor McGrath. Counselor Banjoko?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Bousier. After listening to you, the question that comes to my mind is, can, if we do the cost analysis, will it be, will it still be a good idea to build to size, to whatever that land can take, given the location, which I think is fantastic, for a facility like this to be close to the hospital, to the stores, to the bus stop and all that? So it might not be big enough to have all the amenities that we want in the world, but it's close to some key needs that would really support this population. So I'm wondering if it should make sense to maybe, like, have a smaller size of the great ideas, plus another site within the region, or will it be more costly to have these facilities into places? That's what's coming to my brain.
Through the chair to Counselor Banjoko, I think what a lot of people don't understand is that Willow Square, there was strong advocacy for Willow Square to be built where it is, and it was built where the voices of a number of people said it should be. If somebody there needs to go to the hospital, they're still going by ambulance, they're still being strapped on a gurney, and for anybody with cognition or dementia, that click, when you're strapped down, your trauma's there, whether you're going across the street or across the community. And so I think it's, this just needs to be got right. And my concern is that in a rush to get this done, that it's not going to be responsive to the information that says this is what our needs are, or follow best practice. And I don't know the answer. Your Director Owens is leading the charge on gathering the information and has gathered some, but I don't think there's been a full needs assessment or feasibility study done to, to know. They had pretty tight timelines. I don't, I don't know how, I don't, I don't know the whole scope of what Ms. Owens had to do, but the timelines were shockingly short to me for her to come back with a fulsome report, and I'm not suggesting it wasn't. I just don't know. I'm not sure we have a full scope of what the needs really are. And if it's going to be 20 units, is it going to meet the need? No, it's going to meet some need, but not much of a dent, I don't think.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, is it possible to ask administration a question, or do I wait till later?
After Mr. Bousier has finished.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions from council? I'm not seeing any, so thank you, Luana.
Thank you.
I'm just going to ask administration to come back. Actually, just answer from there if you want, Amanda. Counselor Banjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. It's a quick question. Do, did we consider other options for this project? The reason why I asked is, I mean, we've had instances in the past that we didn't have the complete picture. I just want to know if we considered any other site, or we just focused on this one site? Thank you.
You keep turning it off.
Through the chair to the question, we looked at Willow Square only because it was in the motion specifically identified as the location being at Willow Square. Through the conversations that we had with stakeholders in the community, there, there is a definite need for, from what we can understand, for both types of models. So there seems to be quite a lot of people who are looking for that cottage-style, true independent living, and to build on the point made by Luana around supports given to seniors in their existing homes, that also came out quite clearly in our engagement as well, where in some cases, there's modifications to their existing accommodations that could stretch out the amount of years that they have in their current location. And then the third piece being. And then the third piece being something similar to what Councilor Busheish was describing, where you've got services on a multi-level approach. That was also something that seemed appealing to some people, especially couples who have different medical needs. You may have someone who is completely independent, but then someone who requires medical assistance, maybe a daily check-in or daily servicing that is required. And a model similar to what is being described for the Willow Square site could be more appealing to them. There, there really was a wide range, and through the conversations, I, I don't think that there's been an idea that if we were to develop the Willow Square site as a multi-unit building, that it would meet all the needs of the region. Likewise, if you were to do a cottage-style development on a property somewhere, that also wouldn't meet all the needs of the region. It seems like there, there needs to be a two-pronged approach. Thank you.
Thank you, so it was only Willow Square that was considered for this, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Banjoko, and maybe, Amanda, if you can hold on for a second, do we, in our needs assessment, did, was it identified of how many seniors right now are waiting for housing?
The, so through the chair to the question, we looked at the numbers, so in terms of numbers of the supply that's in the community, it's not very high. So when you're looking at Legion Manor, there's 12 self-contained housing units there. Woodsmoke Elders Lodge in Anzac has four, four mobile homes. Arabasca in Fort Chip has 10, there are one-bedroom units, sorry, sorry, all are one-bedroom units, so you're looking at about 44 units there throughout the region. And then you've got Willow Square, the Continuing Care Center, which we understand is not fully operational, but does have 108 spaces. There are no vacancies in any of those locations. In terms of what the lit, the, the actual numbers of seniors looking for homes, we, we, we wouldn't have an accurate number because we didn't, like, there's no list that exists where you could add all those up. And there's probably a lot more than what we realize, especially from what we're seeing from our demographics. Our region is becoming more of a stabilized region in terms of its population, and we're seeing immigration of seniors who are coming here to be with their families. Or staying as their families are aging and they're having grandkids here in the region, so there's probably more than what we even think there is.
Perfect, thanks, Amanda. Does council have any other questions or comments? Can I have someone make the motion? Councilor Busheish?
Well, I just have a question.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Is it, maybe we amend the motion so the money can be spent, not just, just dedicated to Willow Square?
Yeah, so I was going to actually make an amendment, a friendly amendment to it, but if you have an amendment, if you have a motion to designate it to a needs assessment of, to add a needs assessment to it. I don't even know if we need to dedicate that 10.5, but just adding in there that other locations for additional housing be identified?
Yeah, that would work, just, I don't know, removing the Willow Square portion, or just adding, and/or?
I was, yeah, that's where I was looking at, and, just and, add, and identify other, right after that, identify other locations for additional housing.
I think that works for me.
If you want to go ahead and make that motion, I'll get, do you want to write it in there?
So that administration initiate, that administration, administration initiate and release a request for expression of interest? Or a request for information for the development and operation of a future aging-in-place facility by quarter four, 2025? And that $10.5 million previously committed by council be allocated from capital reserve toward the construction of aging-in-place facility on the Willow Square site? And an additional site? I admitted Willow Square at the very first because I thought we were taking that out, but.
Do you want me to do it again, or? Do I pass?
We're only building one though, right? We're not going to build one at Willow and one at additional site? Or we're building two? What's that, sorry? Okay. Do I reread it, or you just do that? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for that motion, Councilor Busheish, and thanks for saying, Councilor Banjoko. Director Owens, did you have something to add there?
Through, through the chair, to the, just as a general consideration, if we, if administration is going out for a request for expression of interest, we'll have to be clear on what we're going out for an expression on. So if we don't have an identified site and identified budget, we're going to limit the pool of the private sector who will be interested in responding. And because we're so far north, and these developers are, you know, they're operating for typical return on investment, we're competing against cities that have aging across Canada. And my recommendation would be the more specific we are, the more likely we are going to get private sector interest. Maybe there could be a consideration if we do want to move forward with Willow Square and that budget. Maybe there's another motion that also speaks to looking at a land asset that the municipality holds that could be used for, on another site for an alternative model. Keeping in mind that these, in some cases, and using the cottage style as an example, you may have a private developer who's interested in operating and owning something like that, that, that does happen quite often across Canada for that type of model. I just, if, if the motion's too vague, we'll be going back to the drawing board to weigh a bunch of options before we can go out for an expression of interest.
Just, I guess, through the chair to Director Owens, do, do we need a dedicated parcel of land before they, before the, a builder or a developer can bid on it? REI or RFI?
Through the chair to the question, in order for them to do, in order for a cost-benefit analysis to be done properly, they would have to have certain parameters in place. So possibly, we could do, if there is, if we're putting out to the market, there's two locations. So say, for example, if we identify another location, I know Parsons Creek was mentioned possibly for that cottage-style development. Potentially, we could go to market and say, is there an interest in, in a model in one of these sites? That the municipality currently has ownership over these sites, and that there could be up to $10.5 million available for either construction site. We could possibly look at it that way, to say which one would be more viable.
I agree, I think, I think we need to narrow, narrow it down, or we're wasting a lot of time, probably. I don't know what the answer is, Mayor.
We, we risk not getting the attention that we want to get from the private sector, and when you go out for an expression of interest, you want to go out strong so that we get interest. And, and it does take time for private, the private sector to respond to these requests, and we, we don't have many shots at getting it right.
Yeah, and, and if you're using Willow Square, Willow Square, sorry, as a site, you're going to be very limited if you're trying to build bungalows or one, one-story buildings, you're not going to get many on that site, given the, the size of it.
So would it be amenable to have, put back "and" in there, and then that way you have, we can put out expression of interest for a site, if you can identify space in Parsons that would work for the potential builders and developers, as well as Willow Square? And come back and see what they both come back with, what comes back afterwards, and we make the decision afterwards on if we're going to go with two different developments, or go with one of them.
I don't know whose turn to speak, but I think at the end of the day, we probably need to know what style or design of the building. Are we building, like, I listened to Luana speak, and it, the vertical is not suitable, and if we look at building bungalows or one level, you're going to need a fairly large parcel of land. So, I mean, can we even go out without knowing the style, or the, the design? Like, if it's a bungalow, we probably, we'll need a different parcel of land, right, Director Owens?
Through, through the chair to the question, for the Willow Square site, the conversations that have been had are more of a multi-level approach. In terms of going out for an expression of interest, we were not going to go, we were going to go to the market and basically say, here's a land that's available, here's the money that could be available. These are the needs of the region, and we were at, we were planning to ask the sector, the private sector, to come back to us with a model that they think could be viable. Because at this point, we don't know what we don't know, and the development sector will be able to inform us as to what could work there financially. We were expecting to see something that came back that was multi-unit and multi-level. In terms of specifying the exact model, we wanted to get away from that, because we didn't want to prescribe the solution without knowing what the, the best solution was on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor McGrath?
Thank you, Truett and Chair. With, with the, I guess, a little bit of a revised, the NAFTA Trade, Trade Act and stuff, would it be amicable to add to this motion? Should it be like, you know, like, bigger or smaller operators, like, let's say Shepherd's Care or someone like that, that would, have they been, like, funneled up? Or is there some way we could, you know, add it to, like, some of these big-known operators of, of seniors' facilities and supporting facilities? Could that, or would that be, would that be too, I'm not sure, question, I guess the question I'm asking is, have they been, have they been notified? Or could we, in this motion, kind of include those big operators? And actually, there are some private operators that have probably over five, 600, you know, units that are, that are well into the business, and, and seniors enjoy the comforts they get from those operations.
Through the chair to the question, so we haven't worked with any of the operators, because we don't want to preclude any of them from responding to an expression of interest. But that is, though, that is the target audience, is to issue this expression of interest and hopefully get those type of operators and, and developers' attention. In terms of the motion itself, it, it could be that council wants to consider somewhat keeping similar motions to what's in front of you. But then also adding that administration explores municipally-owned land in Parsons Creek, and potentially using that as an asset to attract a private sector development who would be interested in a different model.
I know, I, I appreciate the pain, because if there's even a local guy, I, I think that, you know, kind of, kind of, kind of responsible for, you know, five, 600 seniors around Alberta, and that's, that's what they do. So, good to hear, thank you, man, appreciate the efforts, because it's just been, well, if I was to put a pen on it, since 1993, been on the help board. So here it is, still alive and well, and, and hopefully we get, we get it done.
Thank you, Councilor McGrath, just to Director Owens again, so the way it's worded now, it says "and/or additional site." Can, is that enough to go ahead and look for additional land in Parsons that would work as well, the way it's worded? Because honestly, we look at, our population of seniors almost doubled in the last, in, in a 10-year period. And as Luana commented, that we're going to be in a, the most population of seniors by 2030, that's not a long time away. I'll need housing by 2030. So this is, will that cover that? Is that enough to cover it?
Through the chair, to the question, so, and not to overcomplicate things, but there's two motions in front of us. The first one speaks to Willow Square specifically, so we would have to do the REI for Willow Square, for that site.
So could we add another, remove that out of there? That, move that out? Just remove Willow Square, like Lance read it the first time?
As part.
That's what he read, too, so.
As part of the exercise, then there should be probably another motion then that directs administration to find that second site. Like, if we're going to go to market, then we should say, here's $10.5 million, and here's two options for the site. How, what would your approach be? Which one would you develop, essentially? Because otherwise, you risk, you, you risk having the market compete with the market if we have two different projects going on at once, you may lose market interest.
Okay. Uh, Councilor Busheish?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just looking for some clarification, are, are we, are we looking for a minimum number of doors? Or we're just, if, if Willow Square comes back with 10 units, then that's it? Like, is there a minimum number that we're, we're, we're trying to determine, or, or look, find a site that can hold so many doors?
I think, my opinion is that with all this as well, we also need a, like, a real needs assessment, with these waiting lists that, everywhere, but we don't know how many is on the waiting list. So, and there's also a motion as well to do a, an extensive needs assessment in the region of what is projected to be needed by 2030.
But do we have, I guess, do we, to the chair, anyone, do we have any idea how many units we need? Someone's got to have an idea of what we need for doors, like, it's, especially if we're not going vertical. If we just had St. Agnes and some other folks say that vertical is not the way to go.
Through, through the chair to the question, if I can just add to that, so in terms of the Willow Square request for expression, we haven't had a minimum number of units set? Because we're looking to the private sector to tell us what would be viable on the site. And they'll independently do their own cost-benefit analysis and feasibility analysis on what could and couldn't work on the site.
Correct, yeah, no, I, I under, understand that, but if, if we had a presenter mention that vertical is not the preferred method, or preferred model? Just common sense says you're going to be very limited to, to build a one, a one-floor unit on Willow Square. So if we're talking, we need a minimum of 100 doors, you're probably not getting on Willow Square site. We need 10 doors? Yeah, you, you probably do, right? So I guess it would just be nice to know if anybody in this room has. So I guess it would just be nice to know if anybody in this room has an idea of how many doors we need.
Not on. Maybe the motion is just administration do an extensive needs assessment to see what we need. And then if it comes back, we need 200 doors, then we know we need 12 acres in Parsons to be allocated, that's designated for this. And it comes back, we need 20, or we need 40, whatever that number is, then we look at where the location is. Because I think there's, no matter what comes back, I think Willow Square will be a place that'll be definitely a transitional, if nothing else, to the continuing care. But I think maybe this, I rate it this time, we don't rush it, we do an extensive needs assessment on what the community needs and is going to need in the next five, four to five years. And then when that comes back, we make a decision on where, if then, we may need 12 acres.
Okay. And that makes sense, because I just, when I sat on ACIOA in 2013 to 17, the Willow site was kind of the flavor of the month, but it was also discussed that at that time, it would be vertical structures. And I think, I don't know, one time there was two different towers talked about, and obviously that might have changed since then because now we're looking more at a bungalow style or try to avoid the vertical. So, okay, thanks.
Thanks, can I, Counsel Brinjoko?
Thank you, Mayor, but my comment is that the RFP or the results that we get back should give us some of these options that we're trying to find, correct?
Through the chair to the question, that was the intention. In terms of the approach for vertical versus non-vertical, in our best practice, the six projects that were coming up as a highlight, five out of the six were verticals. So I think for some population, vertical works, and for others, it doesn't. And we would see through the art, when we issue a request for expression of interest on Willow Square, we were, our approach was to see what the private sector came back with in terms of viability. We weren't prescribing what the design had to look like in terms of the actual physical layout. We were prescribing what the needs were and what the community requirements are for the, how it should function as a site.
Okay, but we would allow them to come back with their expertise, with some of the, with the proposals.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So would anyone, if we lead this motion the way it is and go forward with this, but would anyone want to make an additional motion after this to do an extensive needs assessment on the amount of doors we need? Yeah, the amount of, yeah, the amount of doors, like amount of rooms, basically, amount of facilities each. So does anyone have any other questions, comments, or debate points on this motion?
I just-
Go ahead, Counsel McGrath.
I have one. Just, I just wanted to know, prior to this phone out, did we get any more offerings from the federal government, you know, for the seniors or any provincial grants that are, or anything that our MLAs want to, you know, put into, splice up and make it more attractive to the applicant that's going to make the application to us? Are there any incentives? Just, or just we are a standalone, standalone organization to champion this?
Through the chair to the question, the incentive would be, the municipality owns the land, so the site is there if we're talking about Willow Square, and that there's 10.5 million dollars committed in capital funding.
Well, and I appreciate that, but ahead of this or after this, would there be a possibility that the province or, or MLAs or the feds would have some extra incentives to escalate the process? Because it's hard to stomach, we don't know how many doors we need in this, you know, but I'm sure that that's somewhere because, because we do these vision forwards, we do these, you know, there's some needs here for sure. But I don't think it hurts for us, I guess, as elected officials, to know that if we haven't made that advancement towards the other levels of government, you know, that's our job. And if we knew, maybe there's some other incentives during the process that they could extend to. Thank you.
So as we just mentioned, Counsel Bousier, would you be willing to withdraw this motion? And we'll make a new motion to get an extensive needs assessment done? Oh, I'm sorry. No, I think we'd have to, before we do anything, do a needs assessment on what we need in the community.
Yes.
With that, okay. I'll get Jay to word something here.
Okay.
Yeah.
That administration, that administration be directed to complete an extensive needs assessment to understand the population demands for an aging-in-place facility? Do we put a date on that, or is it just wide open? How long would it take? Six months? Year?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to ask if you, if it makes sense to add that the assessment put into consideration the projected needs for the next five years? Because they need as at today, especially after the last speaker thinking forward to five years. I don't know if it's a possibility or not.
I was just, to the chair, Mayor, I was just curious if Q4 is doable for the staff or administration?
Is it doable?
Through the chair, I'd like to just bring to council's attention that due to some grant requirements that we have with our provincial and federal partners, Community Services, along with our partners in planning and development, are working on a housing needs assessment already. That does include the seniors demographic as key consideration. So this, this motion might be duplication of something that we're already doing.
Okay.
I could try to, I guess, weave all this together. So right now, we do have a preliminary needs assessment in terms of the types of services, because there's two different things. There's the medical component and services and day-to-day socialization, all that stuff. Then there's the raw housing itself. So there's kind of layers that build within each other. Through Tony's team, they are going to be looking at housing, housing needs in terms of raw numbers of housing. But when you look at, I think to Counsel Bousier's point around the assessment needs of an actual facility, those are two different things. So while the information that Tony's team would be useful to build into a needs assessment for an actual facility, you may want to either keep this motion here to talk about a specific seniors housing needs assessment. If we were to go to market as a request for expression of interest that was put forward in the council report, we would have gotten something likely from the private sector. They would undertake their own cost-benefit analysis and needs assessment through that process. However, we could back up a step and undertake our own, our own full-blown cost-benefit analysis and needs assessment and then go to market after that. It will slow us down, but to a point that was made earlier by Luana, talking about the need for not rushing, maybe it makes sense to go to, we actually could go to the private sector to do the assessment for us on our behalf.
Okay, so to Counsel Bousier's point, can, is that enough time to get one done?
I don't think so. Because if we were to go to market for it, that alone would take, till Q4 likely.
Okay, so how long would you need then to, for what's up as a motion right now?
I always like over, I always like putting deadlines to motions because it keeps us moving. But I also don't want it to be too soon and we have to come back for amendments. I don't know if it would be feasible to say Q3 2026, or even just put in 2026.
Whatever you think, Lance.
I'm good with what administration, I mean, obviously, it's important to do it sooner than later, but it's also best that we get it right. So if Director Owens wants 2026, I'm okay. With that, it'd be, I prefer Q3 of 2026, but Q4 of 2026.
Okay.
As long as administration's comfortable that they can deliver by that date.
Through the chair to the comment, Q3 probably be better, will push us a bit more. And then by that time, you have council recess, and if there's any expression of interest or something that we're going to be doing as a next step, that could potentially already be in action while there's summer recess.
Okay, perfect. So we'll say Q3 2026?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Do you want to read that motion, Counsel Bousier?
That administration be directed to complete an extensive needs assessment by the end of quarter three 2026 to understand the population demands for an aging-in-place facility.
So any other comments, questions, or debate points before we vote? I'm not seeing any, so I'll call for a vote. In favor online, Counsel McGrath, thank you. Counsel Dogar in favor? And that's carried eight in favor, unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the report on the inclusive recreation needs assessment, speaking needs assessment, I'd like to invite Community Services to introduce their report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Toni Elliott, Acting Director of Community Services, and with me today is Janelle Flurry, Manager of Community Partnerships and Initiatives, and Julie Dolmott, Community Coordinator with the Community Partnerships and Initiatives Today, we are presenting scope of work for an inclusive recreation needs assessment. On April 22, 2025, council resolved that administration carry out a needs assessment to understand the community's recreational opportunities for special needs people, that the study looks at existing services, new services, and engage residents, stakeholders, MLAs, and school boards who provide recreation to special needs people, and that administration report back to council, including scope of work for needs assessment before or by September 9, 2025. Today, we are addressing the third part of that resolution, presenting the proposed scope of work for the assessment. Given the geography and diversity of the region, there is a growing need for universal, inclusive, and accessible recreational opportunities that serve all residents and visitors. This is especially critical considering that 16% of the population live with a disability or chronic illness. Further findings from the Diversity and Inclusion Community Plan survey indicate that approximately 9% of respondents self-identified as persons with disabilities and 6% reporting barriers to accessibility in their daily lives. Following the council motion, a dedicated project team was assembled and began meeting with all delegates who spoke at the April council meeting. These conversations ensured that the delegates' voices were heard and their ideas meaningfully captured. Through this engagement, administration developed the foundation for the scope of work and compiled a list of quick wins, which are acceptable items within the RMWB's scope of control that could be implemented ahead of the formal needs assessment. The draft scope of work was shared with all delegates, followed by a virtual meeting to review feedback and proposed revisions. The updated version was then circulated to internal departments for further input, and it is before you tonight for review. After the April 22 council meeting, administration met with community experts who had come forward to council as delegates, and we do have one here tonight as well, so thank you. Together, we validated quick wins that were then shared with relevant internal departments to initiate timely action, particularly in relation to inclusive playground improvements. This was identified as an immediate need that administration can address without awaiting results of the needs assessment. Inclusive playground advocates were invited to participate in both virtual and onsite meetings at various parks and schools. These sessions marked the beginning of a collaborative effort to identify deficiencies, priorities, and opportunities to enhance inclusivity in playground design and infrastructure, leaning on the voices of community experts. In addition, administration facilitated a meeting with the project delivery office, parks, and community members who are inclusive playground advocates to discuss plans for upcoming playground improvements. The proposed inclusive recreation needs assessment aims to improve quality of life by ensuring equitable access to recreation for all residents and visitors regardless of ability. It will examine current programs, services, and infrastructure to identify barriers and opportunities for more inclusive recreation across the region. Using an asset-based approach, the assessment will highlight strengths of recreation while identifying where additional support is needed for inclusivity. It will center the voices of people with disabilities and their caregivers and include broad engagement with community members, partners, governments, and school boards to ensure collaborative and sustainable solutions. The proposed key deliverable of a needs assessment will be an environmental scan report, community engagement and needs identification report, recommendations, and implementation plan. It has been concluded that a budget of up to $200,000 would be required to commission the inclusive recreation needs assessment through the procurement process. This will cover the costs of a consultant to carry out the needs assessment. What began as the development of a scope of work quickly grew into something much more meaningful. Through this process, the project team has had the opportunity to meet with passionate advocates who care deeply about building a more inclusive and accessible region. Their voices and insights have shaped this work in powerful ways. Thank you, and this concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Toni. Thanks, Janelle, and thanks, Julie. Do we have any questions? Do we have any questions from council for administration? Council Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman, and thank you for, for the good works. I know that a lot has gone into, into this motion. So, when I saw between 75 and 200,000 for the needs assessment, I just wanted to understand a little bit of why it would be so much. As a layman or laywoman, I thought we already know that these needs exist, so I'm wondering why so much.
Through the chair to Councilor Banjoko, to engage with a consultant, to do a broader engagement with the interested community stakeholders and to do those, the different items outlined in the report, we are estimating that it will fall within that range because just based on our previous experience. That's why the resolution is written up to $200,000, because based on the, the request for proposals that goes out to the market, we're not sure what we're going to get, so we said up to.
Okay, thank you. My other question is about the quick wins, that some parks have been identified that do they need upgrades or they are ready as facilities that are inclusive of everyone's needs?
Through the chair to the question, so we met at various playgrounds, so they could identify different pieces or bring to attention certain areas. So it wasn't, wasn't necessarily just about one particular playground, it was educating on the whole of what we need to be looking for and how we can work together for future playground, which ones are coming up for renewals. So it wasn't prescriptive to one specific one, but as they come up for improvements and renewals, then those voices are now at the table.
Okay.
And so that's the very important piece that we need to focus on, is that...
So the changes would allow them to be inclusive?
Part of, yeah, part of the solution.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Council Benjoko. And quickly, what were a few of the quick wins that were in one of the stages?
So at council, through the chair to the question, at council in April, we did have a delegate who spoke about playgrounds and how, about having their voice at the table. So a quick win is let's get that meeting together, and that happened almost immediately, that we were able to get that done. So it's being not just reactive, but now proactive and having the right people at the table.
Okay, thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
Council Cardinal?
Thanks, Mayor. I had a couple of questions. Well, thanks for the presentation, first of all. I have a question about, what facilities other than the playgrounds are we kind of analyzing?
Through the chair to the question, we're looking, the, the scope of work, it includes, it's not prescriptive in the sense that it's only playgrounds. We're talking about recreation facilities, we're talking about external partners, playgrounds, anything that can be constituted as a recreation asset, so not just municipally owned. And so that's what a consultant would look at, is the, our region as a whole of where people recreate and where it's accessible and inclusive, and where we could potentially create new partnerships, or where improvements might be needed. But, so we're not just, just talking about playgrounds.
I guess my next question would be really, what would be something that's been identified, let's say in Fort Chip or Fort Mackay, that, the word that I meant?
Through the chair to Councilor Cardinal, the needs assessment will look at needs in every community, including rural. As of right now, today, the update is presenting a scope of work to go to the market, to hire a consultant to do that assessment. So we haven't identified the needs in every community yet. The delegates who spoke in April provided some highlights of what they see in the community, but we need to go do a regional study.
Are, are you going to do it per community?
Through the chair to the question, yes, it will include the entire region.
I guess you'd get input from the nations as well?
Through, through the chair, if, if the nations view themselves as important stakeholders, which we feel that they would be, they would be invited to participate in the study.
Okay. In Fort McMurray, let's say for a baseball diamond, is there access for disabled to get on a bleacher, let's say?
Through the chair to Councilor Cardinal, at this time, that is a part of what the study will analyze, is how accessible and inclusive our infrastructure like this. There is another agenda item tonight that is looking at improving accessibility, particularly in our St. Creed Athletic Park with the 55-plus Summer Games coming up in 2027. So we have some work to do in our community to get there. That will be part of this assessment.
What's our timeline for this again?
Through the chair to the question, if the motion is passed this evening with the funds allocated, then we will immediately begin working with the procurement department to get the RFP out, because the scope of work is complete. So we will then, within the document, we'd like to have this done by the 2026, but we will go right away to procurement.
So then into, into budget after that, I guess, per community, hopefully we could get it structured in that, that process, maybe?
Through the chair to Councilor Cardinal, the, yeah, part of having a substantial budget for this assessment is so that we can take our time and, and engage with every community.
I suggest maybe doing it per community, not as a, as a, as a whole. Thanks.
Thanks, Council Cardinal. Do we have any other questions, comments, or questions of the administration? I'm not seeing any, so thank you. Do we have any delegates to this item? Can I have someone make the motion? Council Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. I move that administration initiates a request for proposal for the inclusive recreation needs assessment as outlined in the scope of work attachment number one, and report the needs assessment results back to council, and that up to 200,000 be committed from the emerging issue reserve to the Community Services 2025 operating budget to complete the assessment.
Thank you, Council Benjoko, and thank you for the second, Council Wagle. Does anyone have any debate points, discussion, or comments? Council Cardinal?
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate the, the consideration for, you know, enhancing our playgrounds or facilities, but I'm hoping that the 200,000 will be enough. If it's a comprehensive study that we're going to do, that might not be enough, but I'll gladly support this motion. I, I'm pretty pleased that we're moving forward with this, and I hope that we could make, make sure that we take our time and, you know, our processes are in place and, you know, budgets are allocated properly per, per community, and I'll gladly support this motion. So thank you for the hard work, for the staff for this. Thank you.
Thanks, Council Cardinal. Council Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman, and I just want to thank administration again for all the works that has been done, and community members and advocates who have spoken up to support this motion. I, of course, support this and being the motion that I moved initially and the work that has been done is, we learned tonight that about 15% of the population is living with some sort of limit to abilities. So I think this is important that we move forward and continue to work so that we can bring ourselves up to par with other communities and municipalities. Thank you, again.
Thank you, Council Benjoko. Any other council have any comments, questions, debate points? Not seeing any, so I'll call for a vote. And online, Council McGrath in favor? Thank you. Council Dogar, are you still with us? Council Dogar? Council Dogar, are you in the meeting? Do you want to record that Council Dogar is not present? And that's carried unanimously with seven in favor. Thank you, everyone. Next, we're on to the report on sale of land between McDonald Avenue and Highway 63. Lake Plan Development Services, introduce their report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Amanda Owens, Director of Planning and Development Services, and with me this evening is Bryn Armstrong, Manager of Land...
Sorry, Council Wagle? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to state, I have talked to a lawyer about this item about, and gone through and made sure that I don't have a pecuniary interest here, but due to a perceived conflict of interest, as I do have interest in the restaurant, Earl's, I'll be excusing myself from this.
Great, thank you, Council Wagle.
Thank you.
And Council Dogar has also rejoined the meeting. Go ahead, Director Owens, whenever you're ready.
With me this evening is Bryn Armstrong, Manager of the Land Administration Department. In alignment with Clause 43 of the newly approved CAO bylaw, the CAO does not have the authority to approve land transfers less than 90% of the appraised market value, and therefore the decision rests with council. The municipality owns portions of land between Highway 63 and McDonald Avenue in downtown Fort McMurray, as outlined in the map attached in your, in your council package. The municipality does not have a need for these lands, as they do not have road access or irregularly shaped, and a large portion overlaps an unused and undeveloped laneway, which is encumbered by a privately owned underground utility. Therefore, administration recommends the transfer of these lands to adjacent property owners. Council was made aware of this recommendation in March of 2025, when administration brought forward a request to officially close the unused laneway, which was approved under Bylaw Number 22006. At this time, administration advised council that portions of the laneway would be transferred to three adjacent property owners at a nominal rate, and the remaining two municipally owned lots would be sold to one adjacent property owner. As per the attached council report, this amount is 150,933.75. In alignment with the newly approved CAO bylaw, the recommendations in the enclosed council, the enclosed council report are before you this evening for consideration. This concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Director Owens. Just for the public's knowledge, the land is sold at the assessment value, appraised value when the landowner applied for the purchase of the land?
That's correct.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have any other questions for administration? I'm not seeing, so thank you both.
Thank you.
Are there any other, we have any, I guess we don't. Can I have someone make the motion?
Oh, shoot.
Council? The motion's page eight.
Okay, good. Thanks, Mayor. I move that administration proceed with the sale of lands legally described as block, no, sorry, as Plan 9423124 Block 2, all of the lane created by Plan 243, no, 2423124, lying southeast of Plan 198 AS 2891550 Alberta Limited. That administration proceed with the sale of the portion of lands legally described as Plan 198 AS Block 2, all of the lane lying northwest of Plan 0125663 to McMurray TV Center Limited. That administration proceed with the sale of a portion of lands legally describes as Plan 198 AS Block 2, all the lane lying northwest of Plan 0125663, and the lands legally described as Plan 9420532 Area A, comprising of parts of block, of lot block Plan 1-4 includes 2198 AS 161723599 NY, and Plan 2420532 Area B, comprising of parts of lock, no, sorry, lot block Plan 18-34, including 2198 AS 2100, 10266, oh, sorry, 1026776 Alberta Limited.
Thank you, Council Cardinal. Thank you for the second, Council Walkman. Council, any comments, debate points, or questions?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead, Council Cardinal.
No, I, after our discussions earlier and, you know, the reviewing of this, I, I want to commend, these are little small lots, but, you know, it opens up some of the, some of the properties and also provides better servicing for the companies that are involved in this, and also it cleans up our downtown area structure plan that we've dealt with. And it, it's a small portion of lots comprised, it looked like a little puzzle, but now it's all cleaned up, and these little kind of work ethics within our RMWB and our organization, it means a lot. And I, it, looking up on the map, it looked like a mess before, but now it's all cleaned up, so good job.
Thank you, Council Cardinal. Council Dogar? You're on mute, Council Dogar.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I just wanted, which is the exact location of this land, as from the Earl's or there's a bank also there, service? So can the presenter identify the place of land?
I think we can. Can you do that again, Amanda? Because we did, we discussed that in camera at 1:00 when you left, we were discussing that. Go ahead, Amanda.
Through the chair to the questions, in the council package. It's the attached map.
It'd be the attached map on your screen.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, debate points from council? I'm not seeing any, I'll call for a vote. And that's carried six in favor. Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have Bylaw Number 25/022, Community Standards Bylaw Amendment, which we presented for a second, third reading tonight. Like to invite Regional Emergency Services, introduce their, introduce their report, please. Whenever you're ready, Aaron, just...
Evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Aaron Anderson, Manager with Bylaw Services. Today, I'm presenting a proposed amendment to the Community Standards Bylaw that will set a clear seasonal deadline for the removal of snow stockpiles from commercial properties. This change focuses... This change focuses on improving community appearance and enforcement consistency. The motion is to amend the Community Standards Bylaw to require removal of snow piles, debris, and other obstructions on commercial properties by April 1st of each year. Currently, seasonal maintenance deadlines are not defined for private property. As a result, snow piles remain well into spring, revealing garbage and debris as they melt. By setting a clear date, we compare ongoing education with effective enforcement to improve compliance and community appearance. The Community Standards Bylaw prohibits nuisances, but doesn't provide a defined date for seasonal maintenance, such as snow pile removal. Without that deadline, officers must rely on remedial orders, which means time, which means timelines for compliance often stretch into months, sometimes even longer, depending on the file. Bylaw Services routinely deal with snow piles on commercial lots. When spring melt begins, these piles often reveal garbage, construction debris, shopping carts, and other materials that have been buried. Between March and May, complaints peak because these piles expose cleanliness concerns. Officers commonly hear that there is no required timeline to removal of snow piles, because no legal deadline exists until a warning letter or remedial order is received having a defined date for removal. The lack of clear rule delays enforcement and impacts the overall cleanliness and appearance of our commercial areas. Bylaw Services will continue to use ongoing education enforcement to ensure compliance. Education helps encourage voluntary cooperation from property owners, while the enforcement provides the necessary authority when voluntary measures are not enough. This balanced approach builds understanding while maintaining standards across our community. This graph you see is Bylaw Services' education enforcement activities from January 1st, 2022 to August 8th, 2025, having included how many incidents we've had dealt with, with nuisances, warning notices issued, remedial orders issued, and remedial work completed to remove nuisances, which has been charged back to the property owner's tax rule. Slide just shows an example of a snow pile that's melted, leaving different debris behind. Administration is recommending amending Section 30 of the Community Standards Bylaw to add Subsection I prohibiting snow stockpiles in commercial districts, the downtown major redevelopment zone, and the Franklin Avenue reurbanization zone from April 1st to October 1st. These zones can be found on the land use maps located in the consolidated land use bylaw, Appendix A, Bylaw Number B, and 2626-001. This will take effect January 1st to 2026, giving property owners time to prepare. This change will give officers a clear timeline, improve compliance, assist with reducing complaints, and supporting our beautification goals. This concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. Quickly, so how would it differ now? So April 1st, you identify there's melted snow, garbage. Currently, you would go and give a warning. They'd have X amount of days to respond. They don't respond. What's the process right now?
So right now, the process, there is no deadline. So if we notice a snow pile and has melted, and there's much debris behind, like shopping carts and other debris, we would serve a warning letter stating what needs to be removed within a certain timeframe. So that's a warning. And then after a follow-up, if that nuisance still remains, we must provide a remedial order. And that just gives information of, again, what needs to be removed, what sections of the Municipal Government Act and our own bylaws that we need to force to have them removed. And if the remedial order also talks about, if you don't have, if you don't remove the nuisance, we as a municipality can take... We can hire a contractor and remove the nuisance and charge back the tax rule. With that remedial order, it also has a 14-day appeal period, so slowing up timelines again.
So now with the April 1st in the bylaw, would that just be automatic? Skip the warning remedial order, or would it be a warning letter again on April 1st?
So again, we can go to the straight remedial order. It's in the bylaw, there's a timeline that they need to have in, and we can actually go to a violation ticket as well.
Okay.
Straight from the, if it's after April 1st.
Right. And this is for, not if there's snow there. This is for if it's melted snow and garbage. So, I mean, we live in Alberta, so there is a possibility we may have a lot of snow in April, April 1st. So would this be for any snow there on the property, or just the melted garbage that's left behind?
So this is, sorry, through the chair to the question. This is for the snow and debris. So anything after, if it's snowing, if you're in that designated zone, you'll have to haul your snow away instead of stockpiling your snow.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Weigl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I do like the idea of cleaning up the downtown and setting some standards, but I think you did answer my question right there. So if it snows during April, past April 1st, or say in September, businesses will require to remove this snow every single time? Even though, like, let's say it snows every day in April. You cannot stockpile the snow in April, is what this is saying.
Through the chair to the question, that's correct.
Okay. And how did we come up with the dates April 1st and October 1st?
Through the chair, the question might have to... I think it was a suggestion, just because we didn't want to delay the process.
So we threw a dart at the calendar and thought, eh, it kind of snows, not stops snowing around here, and...
The...
It was in the original motion.
Yeah.
Sure. I'm just asking how we got to. So it was that counselor's motion in and itself that got us those dates?
So it is in the motion, as well as the dates. The problem is, is the prolonged melting of the snow and the debris. And once we start the process, we give a remedial order that states one thing, but as the snow melts, it reveals more items, debris, and then we have to start that process over again.
Right. It's just that this doesn't talk about the debris. It just talks about the stockpiling of snow. If I read it right. Any stockpile of snow located within the commercial district, downtown major redevelopment zone, Franklin area reurbanization are defined. So it's not talking about... I do agree that the stockpiling of the snow shows the debris, and it looks awful. But it wouldn't look awful if it was brand-new snow April 2nd. It would be brand-new snow.
Through the chair to the question and statement, correct. But part of that, there's also nuisance items that is considered a nuisance. So because that snow pile is there, it has collected the debris and other obstructions.
Right.
So that would be part of the remedial order. The reason that debris is there is because of that snow pile. So if we have no snow pile, the debris is getting removed as well.
Okay. My argument isn't with you. You've done a great job. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Weigl. Councilor Boushey?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Anderson. Just following up on what counselors do. I think it was my date, the April 1st. But the intent was to remove the stockpiled snow before April 1st, but I was never expecting a mall owner to have to shovel or haul away the snow every day after April 1st. The intent was to clean up the pallets, shopping carts, garbage accumulated from October to April. After that, I think Mother Nature will take care of the snow. And then it's just a matter of someone going picking up the odd garbage bag, because I think most of the debris is going to be accumulated between September or first snowfall. So I guess I don't know if it needs an amendment, but I don't expect any mall owner or business owner to have to haul away snow on April 2nd, 3rd, 4th. Like, that's not the intent of this. It was a one-time, and I thought I mentioned that earlier, because it gets costly to move snow, especially if you're going from downtown to the snow dump. So this was a one... The intent was always one time, April 1st, and then Mother Nature, they can send some staff out, or the owner go pick whatever the garbage is after the April 1st. So I don't know if you need an amendment, but I certainly do not want to see people with bobcats hauling away snow every day in April if it happens to snow.
Yeah. Thank you through the chair, Councilor Boushey. Thank you for the clarification. I guess I'll ask Mayor and Council if we could take a minute, and I would say that this recommended amendment needs another amendment. If we could have some time just to do that.
Okay. But I did have a follow-up question for Mr. Anderson. So just going back to the whole snow scenario, April 1st. I own a business downtown. I got stockpiled. You come and visit me on April 2nd, say, your snow needs to be gone. April 3rd comes around, not gone. Can you explain what happens to me as an owner when that pile is still there on April 3rd, April 4th, April 5th to the 15th, May 1st?
Through the chair to the question. So again, we will work with the business owners that are affected in the zones. So the idea of that snow pile removal, because it was stressed that the delay of removal of debris was there. So working with legal services and our legal representative could probably add on to this. If we don't have a defined date for removal, we're going to be in the same situation of prolonged enforcement. So you will see those, the debris remain for long periods of time, where if it's April 1st, we have a little bit more to work with than we currently have.
Okay. So I... Go ahead, sorry.
So as I said, we'll give you, we'll try to work with you. We'll try to give some new timelines. If we're not seeing any compliance within a respectable timeframe, we could end up issuing violation tickets. That's just one option. But the remedial order would also state that if we don't get to the deadline and we're not seeing any progress, we as the municipality can choose to go in and remove that stockpile and charge back the tax rule.
Okay.
That's a normal process.
And that's where I'm going with this. So as an owner, just following what Mayor Bowman said, what's different than last, the previous bylaw? Like, when will the... If I continue to ignore your notices, your visits, when do I see the RM bobcat? And when do I see that charge on my tax rule? Like, are we... Is it... Does it matter if it's a business owner we like, a business owner we don't like? Are we being consistent? So April 1st is the deadline. When does Aaron and his bobcat show up and remove it, and it's on my tax rule, like a water bill will be our property taxes? When does that happen with this new bylaw?
Through the chair to the question. So this would help with consistency, because we don't have the staff to do, take an active, productive approach. We try to. We try to get the warning letters out beginning the season, try to get that timeline, give them a chance to remove the debris. But it doesn't speak to the snow piles currently. So we have to wait till those snow piles are gone right now and see that debris before we issue a remedial order to remove any debris being left behind. So that's the difference. If you get rid of the snow pile, you wouldn't have that debris, and then you wouldn't have that prolonged enforcement. That's the two differences right now.
Okay, thanks.
If you want, administration wants to take a few minutes to amend that, and we can bring it back.
Yeah, I would appreciate that time. Five.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
So we'll take a 10-minute break, council, and we'll be back at 7:10 p.m. So, we'll take a ten-minute break, Council, and we'll be back at 7:10 PM.
Are we being consistent? So, April 1st is the deadline. When does Aaron and his Bobcat show up? And remove it and it's on my tax rule like, like a water bill will be our property taxes? When, when does that happen with this new bylaw?
Through the Chair to the question. So, this would help with consistency because we're, we don't have the staff to do, take a, an active, productive approach. We try to, we try to get the warning letters out beginning the season, try to get that timeline, give them a chance to remove the debris. But it doesn't speak to the, the snow piles currently. So, we have to wait till those snow piles are gone right now. And see that debris before we issue a remedal order to remove any debris being left behind. So, that's the, the difference. If you get rid of the snow pile, you wouldn't have that debris. And then you wouldn't have that prolonged enforcement. That's the two differences right now.
Okay, thanks.
If you want, administration wants to take a few minutes to amend that and we can bring it back.
Yeah, that would appreciate that time. Five.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
So, we'll take a ten-minute break, Council, and we'll be back at 7:10 PM.
Are we being consistent? So, April 1st is the deadline. When does Aaron and his Bobcat show up? And remove it and it's on my tax rule like, like a water bill will be our property taxes? When, when does that happen with this new bylaw?
Through the Chair to the question. So, this would help with consistency because we're, we don't have the staff to do, take a, an active, productive approach. We try to, we try to get the warning letters out beginning the season, try to get that timeline, give them a chance to remove the debris. But it doesn't speak to the, the snow piles currently. So, we have to wait till those snow piles are gone right now. And see that debris before we issue a remedal order to remove any debris being left behind. So, that's the, the difference. If you get rid of the snow pile, you wouldn't have that debris. And then you wouldn't have that prolonged enforcement. That's the two differences right now.
Okay, thanks.
If you want, administration wants to take a few minutes to amend that and we can bring it back.
Yeah, that would appreciate that time. Five.
Ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
So, we'll take a ten-minute break, Council, and we'll be back at 7:10 PM.
Welcome back, everyone. We do have amendment now for this, but that will come after second reading is read. Moving on, Counselor Cardinal, you have any questions or comments or questions right now, sorry?
Oh, sorry, I did have a question. I forgot.
I had a question and yeah, let's get back to business.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Cardinal. Can I have someone make the motion for the second reading? Kazar Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. I move that bylaw number twenty-five slash zero-two-two being an amendment to the community standards by law be read a second time.
Can I have a counselor second that? Okay, thanks, Counselor Cardinal. Now we have an amendment to that. Counselor Bousier?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Bowman. The bylaw number twenty-five slash zero-two-two be amended by replacing section one with the following. Any stockpile of snow, including debris left behind from melting snow stockpiles located within commercial districts, downtown major redevelopment zone, or Franklin Avenue reurbanization zone as defined by the land use bylaw number twenty-six slash oh-oh-one as amended from April fifteenth to October first.
You did? Hey, thanks, Counselor Cardinal. Counselor Bousier, do you want to speak to that amendment?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. Yeah, I think the purpose of this date change is to allow a bit more time for Mother Nature to maybe not snow on us and give maybe our folks at bylaw some more time to do their job. So it's a change of two weeks, I guess. And the April first, as Counselor Stewart asked, it was kind of a dark date that I had picked out. So I'm good with April fifteenth. It's two more weeks. I just prefer not to see garbage sitting around in June, May. So I think this will work.
Sure, thank you. Counsel, have any other comments, questions, or debate points to this amendment? Counselor Cardinal?
No, I support the motion. I support the amendment. I'll be there to clean up the garbage if it if it snows in May.
People in the community will appreciate that. Counselor Bousier?
Yeah, just thank you, Mayor. I do have a question, I guess, just follow up to Counselor Weigle. So on April fifteenth or sixteenth, if it snows in May and a stockpile of snow, we're not, they don't have to take it away, correct, Mr. Anderson?
Through the chair, can you repeat the question again? Sorry.
If a property owner has cleaned up his snow, the debris by the April fifteenth date, and Mother Nature decides to give us a downfall in May first, and Mr. Property Owner, Mrs. Property Owner go and stockpile it, under this new bylaw, amended bylaw, are they obligated to take it to the snow dump?
Through the chair, the question, if it's enough snow that it's created a stockpile of snow, technically, yes, they would need to haul it to the snow dump. Again, we are a reasonable group, and we'll work with the property owner in May. It could be gone in a couple of days before the the timeframe we give.
Okay, yeah, and again, I just want to make perfectly clear, this is not about making people pay to carry snow away three, four times a year. I just clean up the major debris, stockpile once, and if Mother Nature happens, bless us with another snowfall, that we maybe give the the property owners a little bit of leeway, assuming that there's no major debris in that pile, which there shouldn't be if the snow was removed the first time, correct?
Okay, through the state, to the chair to the statement and the question there, that's correct. Well, we have a lot of discretion with enforcement. So again, we'll work with the property owner, and we understand that the first pile was removed, there shouldn't be any debris in the first place.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Bousier. Counselor, have any other comments, questions, or debate points related to the amendment? I'm not seeing the call for a vote. This is just on the amendment that Counselor Bousier brought forward? Counselor Dogar, are you with us? Counselor Dogar?
Yes, I'm with you.
And how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. So that's carried with five in favor. Moving on to the motion for the second reading. Does Counsel have any debate, discussion, or comments related to the second reading of the bylaw change, Counsel Weigle?
I guess there's a, the question, because I agree with the garbage, is the issue that the, like, in the bylaw already, any loose litter, garbage, construction debris, refuge, whether located on a storage area or elsewhere on the property, is it because we don't have the definition of snow in and itself that because frozen garbage in snow is not loose? Like, is that why, or is it the actual stockpile of the snow? Like, is it the snow is the issue, or the litter is the issue? I guess is the question.
Through the chair, the question, both. So the litter is there because it's collected from the snow and being stockpiled.
Right, but that's addressed in section B, right? Any loose litter, garbage? So the litter and debris itself, you don't need a new amendment for that. If you can see it, a stockpile of snow, litter all the way through it, you should be able to go and say, hey, clean this up.
Correct.
So is the date giving you the ability to then not have to wait for a complaint? Because bylaw is complaint-based, so I'm assuming the reason for the date is that way it's, I don't even know the word, but it's being, I guess, it's it's being taken care of outside of a complaint-based situation.
Through the chair, the question, it just helps with consistency in having all owners or businesses in the zones with a date of removal. So again, the the issue is the prolonged enforcement, the way the bylaw currently reads.
Okay.
So if there's debris there, we'll write a remedal order for it to be removed. But as the snow melts, there's more debris, and then we'll have to follow up with another remedal order. And that's fourteen days. You have to appeal that order, each and every order that we issue.
And so if there is, like, if bylaw drove past a business property and it had debris everywhere, would they stop in to let the operator know that they're in contravention of that bylaw? Or would they wait till there was a complaint made about that property and then show up?
So through the chair, the question, right now, when it comes to property maintenance and cleanliness, we try to take a proactive approach. So if the bylaw officer does pass it and it's noticeable, and with these, in these zones, it's a common complaint that we receive. So we'll try to deal with it before we get the first complaint, I guess.
Okay. Yeah, okay, yeah, I guess my, we're still in debate, right? Yeah, I guess my only issue is this, is this, like, we talked about, is this the stockpile of snow, which you explained. But like, if it snows all of April, like, if I clean up my stockpile and it's clean, and then all of a sudden I just have a stockpile because it snowed for two weeks, like you said, technically, I'm in now contravention of that because it's after April fifteenth.
Through the through the chair to the question, that's correct.
And so if I was a large organization like Walmart or Pierpont Mall, that could become very costly, the fact that I have to continue to take that stockpile away.
Through the chair to the through the chair to the statement, that's correct.
Okay.
Could be, yeah.
So unfortunately, due to that, I love the idea of this, and I love the proactiveness of cleaning the neighborhood, and I but but due to that, I will have to be voting against.
Thanks, Counselor Weigle. Counselor Bousier?
Through the chair to Mr. Anderson. And again, I just want to make this clear, this isn't about nailing and jailing. So, following up on Counsel Weigle, so if the property owner has cleaned up by April fifteenth, and unfortunately, Mother Nature gives us a dump of snow and they happen to stockpile it, and you can see there's no debris, we're not going to be banging down buddy's door or the lady's door and saying, you got to remove that snow pile, correct? Like, we're going to use some common sense, correct?
Through the chair to the question, that's correct.
Okay.
We will work with the property owners, especially if they have removed the first stockpile that they have.
Right.
But the way the bylaw reads, if we do get a complaint, and it's enough snow that's accumulated in a different pile and has caused another nuisance of collecting shopping carts and other debris.
Yeah.
We would be able to do something about that.
And it's also, it's just not the debris. It becomes a safety issue as well when you've got large snow piles in parking lots, and you're trying to maneuver in and out, and you can't see because piles of snow are there, right? Like, it isn't just always about debris. There is a safety concern that you guys, that your team also watch for as well?
Through the chair to the question, that's correct. We do get complaints regarding sightlines as well.
Okay. What'd you say? What was it called?
Sightlines being obstructed, so.
Thank you.
Flow of traffic.
Thanks, Counselor Bousier. Counselor Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. I don't want to beat this to death, but I'm thinking April fifteenth in Fort McMurray could be in the middle of the whole of the snow and frozen land, if I remember correctly. April fifteenth is not, is not, I don't think things will be melting a lot, April fifteenth in Fort McMurray.
It was thirty degrees this April.
It will be thirty degrees. Your prediction.
No, no, not for just the last, April past was thirty degrees.
Oh, okay, maybe I forgot how warm. Okay, thank you. It's gonna be warm. Okay, thank you.
We all hope it's gonna be. So I have to, so, Aaron, not to put you in the spotlight, but when Counselor Weigle asked if there was snow piled, that that would, that the bylaw would be the stockpile of snow would be halfway removed after the fifteenth, you said yes. But when Counselor Bousier asked if that was the case, it would be just debris, not the snow, so.
Through the chair to the
Once it's written and passed, that's what it is.
Yeah, just for clarification, again, we, legislation, we have to go by how it reads. We, but we also have discretion. So when counselor says it must be removed after April first, technically, the way it reads, you're correct. But as officers, we have discretion, and we can work with the property owner. So if we're not seeing that being removed or anything compliance, we can go different routes through orders and tickets. But if we're seeing, you know, the property owner making, complying and making progress with the stockpiles, I mean, there's no, there's not going to be an issue there.
Okay, my concern is similar to Counselor Bousier's and Counselor Weigle's, that this isn't going to cause additional cost to business owners to have to haul snow away after that point. But and Counselor Benjoko's, my, I mean, the last few Aprils, I mean, go back since the fires, middle of April, it's been hot here. So I wouldn't anticipate any snow, but that doesn't mean we haven't had our worst snow snowfalls in May. Counselor Weigle?
Yeah, I guess along the same lines, I I'm not against the idea of this, and I guess my worry is that it's unfortunate, but you just see people weaponize bylaws against each other. And so if Lot A and Lot B are beside each other, and Lot A, and they're not happy neighbors, it just gives another thing that all of a sudden it snowed, there's a stockpile, we're calling bylaw. And you have to show up, and like you said, you have to by read it. Is there a way of wording after April fifteenth, like, and I'm just throwing it out there, like, after April fifteenth, every stockpile needs to be removed after, you know, a length of two weeks if it's over the height of one meter? Like, can there be, I know we're going crazy here, but I what I don't want to see is I don't want to see neighbors weaponizing a bylaw to cause aggravation. But I do want to see the streets cleaned up way better than they are now. And I agree, when Counselor Bousier brought this up earlier in the spring, and it went out, and I went out to my own parking lot, and I'm like, yeah, you know what, like, we took it out, we looked it out, and it looks way better. And so I don't want to defer from what we're trying to do. Unfortunately, these these things do get played between neighbor to neighbor, and I don't want to see that. Because as a bylaw officer, you have to, like you said, you have to follow by writing. And so maybe I'm asking the wrong person, but I think the idea of it, I love the, I love the spirit of it, but I just don't want it to be able to used against each other, or in a, like, we have a crazy snowfall, and like I said, Walmart is now having to take out every three days, which is onerous and expensive. So I'm not sure the solution, but that's my
Thanks, Counselor Weigle. Any other comments, questions, or debate points from counsel? I'm not seeing any, so I'll call for a vote on the second reading. Counselor Dogar?
Yes.
In favor? Thank you.
Favor.
Thank you. And that's carried with four in favor. Can I have someone make the motion for the third reading? Anybody? Counselor Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. I moved that bylaw number twenty-five slash zero-two-two be read a thought and final time.
Thank you, Counselor Benjoko, and thank you for the second, Counselor Bousier. To Counsel, have any other debate points, comments, or questions? Counselor Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. I I struggle with the motion. I want the streets to be clean. I'm just not sure how this will be enforceable, and the climate factors and date factors. So those are my concerns. I'm not sure of fifteenth, I'm not sure if there's a way to have an announcement to say this is gonna be, you've got to, you've got two weeks to clean up, maybe when we know that's it.
Yeah, I think
Is that a debate or a question?
I think we'd have to have an extensive engagement community to let them know this was coming.
I think
This wouldn't be a surprise visit from bylaw. This would be months in the making with our with our communications to let everyone know.
So I still have some questions on how this is actually possible to enforce. So just expressing my doubts as to how this can be done fairly without picking the easy, easy enforceable points. And then what happens to the smaller businesses and, I mean, what comes to my mind readily is Walmart, for obvious reasons, because I think that's the point Walmart exists, that area. So I don't know how this could could work. And I don't know if the current bylaw had, if you have tried to enforce it. I I'm not sure this will be the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Benjoko. Counselor Bousier?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Through the chair to Mr. Anderson. Given the last couple of comments from Counsel Weigle, Weigle and Funky, are you, like, are you concerned with the way the bylaw is written? Do you feel there's going to be reservations to enforce? Or is there something we can do different that will just give you the opportunity to make sure that we have snow piles gone by, I think one was in a parking lot in June of this year because the snow hadn't melted, and it had garbage, and I think you're familiar with that one. Like, that's what I don't want. June.
Through the chair to the question, so hearing counsel's comments and concerns, I don't have an issue with the date. I am concerned about the follow, follow-through. So if they don't remove that by April fifteenth, then we're back to the original service of warning letters and remedial orders, and you're still looking probably into June for us to take action through tax roll and contractors. What it does, again, with, it creates consistency. So a concern I heard was, is it going to be fair? Well, the date makes it fair because it's a concern I heard was, is it going to be fair? Well, the date makes it fair because it's all everybody within those identified zones to have, remove their snow pile. So that helps us with straight enforcement through a violation ticket. If we have repeated offenders, which we deal with this on an annual basis in spring, we, we know we're gonna get calls. But if you don't have the date, and then, again, we go back to the original process, the businesses are still gonna probably get a door knock from bylaw services either way.
Yeah.
And a conversation is gonna be had about removing debris because it's in the current bylaw as it reads right now. So the date is consistent, it's fair for all the businesses. The only thing maybe I suggest to wording, if council is considered and if legal services agrees, if council is concerned about after, what happens after their first snow pile removal is maybe add that to the wording. Stockpile must be removed, their first stockpile must be removed by this certain date. And nothing after.
Okay, and Yeah.
So then after that, if a snowfall creates another pile, it, it's allowable until it melts, is my suggestion.
But couldn't somebody just say, that's a first, that's, that's my second pile?
Sorry?
Couldn't someone just say, that's my second pile?
Could be. So it leaves it up to an argument that we would have to, the officer would have to approve, and especially if it's appealed, we would have to prove that through the committee.
Okay, I mean, cause just going back to what Counsel Stu said, I mean, with, with or without this bylaw, you can have business owners, I'll use Stu's word, weaponize you anyways. This isn't gonna make any difference if two, you know, adjacent homeowners or property owners don't like each other, they can call whether the bylaw is there or not, right?
That's correct.
Um, so I'm not really, I worry about that as well, like Counsel Wygell. I guess, I just, I guess the whole intent of this is to have the parking lots cleaned by, like, April fifteenth. And if Mother Nature decides to provide a bit more snow, well, I think the sun will take care of that. And I just, Aaron, I have confidence in you and your staff that common sense will prevail, like, if there's a stock of snow or a pile of snow in a parking lot, and tomorrow's forecast says plus thirty, we're not gonna go tell the owner, you gotta move the snow today. Like, we'll allow Mother Nature, right? Like?
Through the chair to the, to the question, so that's, that's correct.
Okay.
There is discretion there. There's also a council policy, enforcement policy, which has, is passed by council, it tells bylaw services how we deal with complaints and how we enforce bylaws, and, and a bunch of other stuff. So if council says that, hey, you, you're not enforcing the piles after a date, okay, it's the first snow stockpile, then we have to take that, that, that action. And we will not enforce if that's what council would like.
Right, okay. And at the end of the date, this time next year, if this little exercise was a complete gong show, we can just change it. Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Council Bousier. Uh, Council Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. Um, probably my final question on this one. Um, did we benchmark with similar cities? Is this what others are doing? Or is there any similar practice that we can copy that is effective anywhere around us?
Through the chair to the question, might have to rely on legal services for that, but for my own research,
Yes.
Other municipalities have rules around stockpiling, and snow is, and stockpile is, is, is included in the definition, sorry, snow is included in the stockpile definition. And this community standard bylaw was based on other municipalities as well.
The original one that we are trying to change?
The original one, yeah.
Okay. But, uh, Nico has any comment about that, no?
Um, through the chair to the question, uh, yes, we did look at some benchmarking, and, uh, Mr. Anderson is correct. Stockpiling does include snow, and we do not allow stockpiling on properties. Um, and I'd like to point out that bylaw does have a great deal of discretion, that if we do have uh, significant snowfall after April fifteenth, we can use a remedial order which could give them, say, two weeks in order to clean it up. It's not that we're going to require, uh, fresh snow removal on April sixteenth. Uh, we do have a great deal of discretion, but at the same time, we are looking to beautify our, our community, and so we do not want to allow piles of dirty snow to be left until June. But more further to the question, yes, this was benchmarked.
Okay, so, but in this case, we don't have, uh, snow pile as part of what could be, uh, covered. Is that what I'm hearing?
Through the chair to the question, that's correct. Snow piles are not identified in the community standards bylaw as it reads right now.
So if we add it to what we currently have, would it be easier, more effective to, or more doable?
Through the chair to the question, the motion, uh, for you tonight is adding the, the snow stockpile to the bylaw to address the issue.
Okay, but, but what makes it different is the date thing then?
Correct.
Because that should have been in the, in the, uh, bylaw.
So there's, there's two differences. There's snow pile,
And the debris.
Stockpile being added and the date.
Yeah.
For removal.
I think the date is the issue then. Okay, thank you.
Thank Council Benjoko. Does anyone have any other questions, comments, or debate points? I'm not seeing any, so I'll call for a vote. Council Dogar in favor? Yeah, Council Dogar is in favor. Thanks, Aaron. And that's been defeated. Three in favor, three against. Next, we have the report on the two thousand twenty-five reserve bids and sale conditions for tax sale properties. I'd like to invite Corporate Services to introduce their report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Lori Farquharson, Chief Financial Officer, and with me is Kevan Navidi, Municipal Assessor. Kevan will present the two thousand twenty-five reserve bids and sale conditions report.
Administration had made every effort to collect tax areas on eighty-seven properties with an outstanding balance of seven hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred sixty-seven and twenty-four cent as of August eighth to twenty-five. On the section four eighteen of the Municipal Government Act, municipalities must offer for sale at public auction any parcels on the tax areas list if payment is not received by the deadline. The payment agreements can still be made up to the auction dates. As for, so far, agreements have been reached for seventy-four of eighty-seven properties, and efforts will continue until the auction. Any dissolved properties will be removed from Attachment one. Last year, this process reduced the auction list from hundred forty-seven properties to just five. Administration recommends that the reserve bids and sale conditions be approved as outlined in Attachment one dated September fourth, two twenty-five. This concludes our presentation. We are happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Kevan. Um, just a quick question for me, so payments made on this, on their tax account before the auction date is taken off auction?
To the chair, to Mayor Bowman, that's correct.
Thank you. Does council have any other questions? I'm not seeing any, so thank you both. Can someone make the motion? Council Wygell?
I move that the reserve bids and sale conditions be established as listed on Attachment one dated September fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank Council Wygell, thank you for the second, Council Benjoko. Does council have any other debate points, discussion, or comments? I'm not seeing any, so I'll call for a vote. In favor? Online, Council Dogar? Thank you. And that's carried unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have the report on the two thousand twenty-five capital budget amendment. I'll ask Corporate Service to introduce their report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Lori Farquharson, Chief Financial Officer. Administration has identified one capital project to be submitted for capital budget amendment consideration. Council is the approving authority for the capital budget, subject to the provisions of the Fiscal Responsibility Policy, FIN one sixty. The capital budget amendment will result in a net increase of one million and eighty-eight thousand dollars to the two thousand twenty-five and prior capital budget as outlined in the Budget Net Change Summary. The project amendment is for the Conklin Water Treatment Plant construction. Significant challenges were encountered during installation, resulting in a greater control system programming scope. Increased programming resulted in additional water hauling required to maintain operational level of services in Conklin. Combined challenges resulted in additional effort and oversight from the consultant that were unbudgeted. Administration is requesting that the two thousand twenty-five capital budget amendment, project cash flow cancellation and amendment, net impact dated September fourth, two thousand twenty-five be approved, and that the two thousand twenty-five capital budget amendment, project cash flow cancellation and amendment cash flow summary dated September fourth, two thousand twenty-five be approved. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Lori. Uh, does anyone have any questions for the presenter? I'm not seeing any. Thank you, Lori. Do we have any delegates this later? Can I have someone make the motion? Council Wygell?
I move that the two thousand twenty-five capital budget amendment, as summarized as Attachment one, two thousand twenty-five capital budget amendments, project cancellations and amendments, net impact dated September fourth, two thousand twenty-five be approved, and that the revised cash flow of capital projects is summarized on Attachment two, two thousand twenty-five capital budget amendments, project cancellations and amendments, cash flow summary dated September fourth, two thousand twenty-five be approved.
Thank you, Council Wygell, and thank you, Council Bousier, for the second. Does council have any other debate points, discussion? I'll call for a vote. Oh, sorry, Council Benjoko, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. Um, sorry about that. So there were challenges that increased the, uh, the, the cost by a million. Yeah, what are those challenges?
I'll defer to Director White to answer those questions for you.
Uh, through the chair to the question, um, this was a project where we saw a, a new, uh, train put into the Conklin Water Treatment Plant. Um, so we had challenges around implementing the new, um, the, the new electronic system, um, that goes into the water treatment plant system. Uh, it took longer to deliver that component of it. Um, so what happens is, is that, um, we were required to do a lot more trucking and, and hauling of water, um, which was an unforeseen, uh, cost. And furthermore, um, we needed to bring the consultant onboard for a longer period of time, so there's additional costs associated with that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Council Benjoko. So I'll call for a vote. Uh, Council Dogar already voted in favor. That's carried unanimously. Uh, next, we have the report, two thousand twenty-five capital budget request. I'll ask Corporate Services, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Lori Farquharson, Chief Financial Officer, and with me this evening is Tony Elliott, Acting Director of Community Services, and Keith Smith, Director of Public Works. We're here this evening to request funding for the infrastructure life cycling of RMWB's sports facilities in preparation of future games.
Council has directed administration to bid for the two thousand twenty-seven Alberta fifty-five-plus summer games and the two thousand twenty-eight Alberta summer, summer games. Subsequently, the RMWB has been awarded the fifty-five-plus games in two thousand twenty-seven and are awaiting response on the two thousand twenty-eight games following the bid submission last week. The community has, has the required infrastructure and sports venues for the various games events. However, following recent inspections by staff, it has been determined that certain repairs are necessary to ensure that the venues adequately meet the needs of athletes and visitors by summer two thousand twenty-seven.
Good day, everyone. The SAP Trail System will support athlete and patron movement for the two thousand twenty-seven fifty-five-plus summer games hosted as SAP. Ensuring safe and accessible pathways is essential for mobility during the event. The trail system is highlighted in purple on the area photo attached to this slide. The existing trail has reached end of life, and as you can see on the pictures, it shows a significant surface deterioration. Originally scheduled under the two thousand twenty-six recreational trail capital program, the urgency has increased due to the upcoming games. Replacement of approximately two thousand three hundred forty-eight linear meters of three-meter-wide uh, class-one asphalt trail includes full removal and resurfacing to restore safe, accessible pedestrian infrastructure. The total estimated cost is one million, five hundred and four thousand. Corless Field is the proposed sport hub location for tennis during the two thousand twenty-seven fifty-five-plus summer games. Courts currently do not meet competitive standards and require upgrades to support e- event needs and long-term community use. Proposed scope of work for Corless Tennis Courts will include site review, analysis, full resurfacing of three tennis courts, and post-game line painting to accommodate pickleball. Proposed scope of work for Corless Sports Fields will include design and construction of horseshoe pits, bocce ball courts, and beach volleyball. Installation of protective systems for throwing events such as discus, hammer, and javelin. The total estimated cost for Corless Tennis Courts and sports fields will be nine hundred seventy-six thousand and six hundred and twelve dollars. TCP is identified as an alternative venue for two thousand twenty-seven fifty-five-plus summer games and a confirmed host site in the two thousand twenty-eight Alberta Summer Games. The TCP track was installed in two thousand thirteen and now shows surface cracking due to ground movement. And while preventive maintenance is ongoing, a full lifecycle rehabilitation is required to meet competitive standards. Project of TCP rehabilitation scope includes running track surface, high jump shed and structures, long jump pits, throwing areas, and supporting infrastructure. The total estimated cost is one million, six hundred eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars.
In summary, the total budget request is four million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, which is comprised of one million, five hundred and four thousand for the Sing Crude Athletic Park, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars for the Corless Tennis Courts, and one million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars for the and $1,686,960 for the Timberly Community Park. This concludes our presentation. We're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Counselor, go ahead. Counselor Cardinal, question?
Thanks, Mayor. Through the chair to presenters. Thank you. I look forward to being a part and seeing the games succeed. I've got a question about Sing Crude, no, not Sing Crude, Timberly. Is that the one that always slides?
Through the Chair, Counselor Cardinal, you're talking about the football field, so that's the lower part of TCP. What we're referring to here is the upper part of TCP with the running track that's next adjacent to the school.
Okay. Thanks. I was just wondering if that would have been enough because you'd have to raise it, but yeah, thanks for that clarity.
Thanks, Counselor Cardinal. Counselor Weigl?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Is there no pickleball in the games right now? Is that not part of the ask for them?
Through the chair, pickleball is not part of either set of games that we've bid for.
Okay.
Thanks, Counselor Weigl. Do you have any questions from Council? Counselor Doger?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for the nice presentation, and the pictures display the actual state of affairs. I just want to ask you, the presenters, once the pictures are taken, is it a fair wear and tear? Have they completed their age limit? So, or, you know, just to want to see that the initial, the construction that was appropriate according to the structures and the teachings? Thank you.
Do you mind me take this one? Through the Chair, Counselor Doger, great question. So, I'll use SAP for an example. So, what you see there now, the trails has gotten to this state of disrepair, simply because from previous conversations that we've had with Council, the functionality studies suggested that we work on the drainage first. Now, when it comes to SAP, that's what we've done. We've worked on the drainage. We've worked on the swales. We've worked on, and now we need to do the perimeter. However, we would have come forward in 2026 to upgrade these trails, but the games has expedited this need. So, we're in a place now where we would have came forward, all these requests would have came forward in the future, but the games expedited it. So, there were things that was happening in the background in order to get this infrastructure to this point. But, a great observation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Doger. Do we have any other questions for administration? I'm not seeing any, so thank you very much. Do we have any delegates? Can I have someone make the motion? Counselor Cardinal?
All right. I move that the capital project athletic games host infrastructure renewal, as summarized on attachment one, be approved.
I think Counselor Cardinal, thank you for the second. Counselor Bousier, we have any other debate, discussion, or comments from Council?
Aye.
Go ahead, Counselor Doger. Counselor Cardinal?
I look forward to the games, and I look forward to seeing the upgrades. Appreciate the time and input that everybody done to this, and right on. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Cardinal. I just want to also say thanks for being proactive on this before we get close to the games and we're trying to catch up. With that, we'll call for a vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have to ask a question.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Doger.
Thank you. You know, it's really very enjoyable, pretty nice presentation by Dr. Keith Smith, my favorite. I just want to ask you, is there any line or date on by which the repairs would be done?
Are you asking for a timeframe, Counselor Doger?
Correct.
A timeframe when it would be completed?
Through the Chair to Counselor Doger, in time for the games, July 2027.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll call for a vote in favor online. Counselor Doger? Thank you. I can join. Next, we have the report on elected officials' compensation travel expenses. Policy FIN 050. I'll ask Corporate Services. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Lori Farquharson, Chief Financial Officer. On July 8th, 2025, Council passed the following resolution, that administration bring forward recommendations concerning remuneration for members of Council, including considerations for per diems for councilors attending Council meetings and Council-appointed committee meetings, based on the most recent third-party consultant review. As directed by Council, administration engaged with a compensation specialist, Gallagher Benefit Services Group, to perform a custom market study and provide recommendations for Council's compensation. The study included a review of nine comparator organizations within Canadian municipalities, as outlined in the Council report. For the mayor, the 2023 compensation was trending above the 75th percentile by 9.7%, and for the role of councillor, the pay is 44% below the 75th percentile. Following a request from Council, a secondary review was completed with the compensation specialists to narrow the comparator organizations to align with the region's size and industry focus. The revised scope excluded Rocky View County and Strathcona County, as the councillor positions are full-time. In addition, we removed the smaller municipalities and focused the comparison on the city of St. Albert, Yellowhead County, and the city of Red Deer. Based on this analysis, administration is recommending option two, effective November 1st, 2025, aligning with the appointment of the next council. This would result in an increase to the annual councillor remuneration to $62,386, which includes a 2024 annual economic adjustment, equating to an increase of $14,322 over the current remuneration, which is a 31% increase. The mayor's compensation would remain at the current level of $170,896. In the agenda package, there are three versions of the policy to represent each of the options for Council consideration. Option one presents a status quo. Option two includes the annual increase I just mentioned, with an honorarium for attending Council-appointed committee and board meetings, as described in the Council report. Option three provides the recommended increase over a four-year elected term with an honor for attending Council-appointed board and committee meetings, as presented with option two. Administration is recommending that the elected officials' compensation travel and expense policy, FIN 050, dated September 4th, 2025, as outlined in option two, be approved. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Lori, do you know when the last time Council's remuneration was changed?
Through the chair to the chair, the only increase was a market adjustment in 2024. It was very minor, I think, less than 3%. Prior to that, it's been a very long time, and in my opinion, the councillor's remuneration is significantly lower than it should be.
Yeah. So, we'd say significant length of time. Is that 10 years?
Through the chair to the chair, I actually don't have that in front of me. I wasn't able to actually confirm the last time it was.
Oh, wow. It's that long. Okay.
It has been a significant amount of time.
Thank you. Counselor Cardinal?
Thanks, Mayor. Through the chair to the presenter. Thanks for the presentation. I know that option two has, you know, payable, you know, if you go to a meeting, you're away from your family from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the evening, 6:00 to 10:00, whatever it may be, it says, you know, $150 payable to the individual, the councillor. I guess my only concern is how many, how many council-appointed committees can one councillor sit on? Because we're not going to have five, one councillor sit on five committees, and then, you know, just... So, do we have, I can't remember if in our policy, our council-appointed committee policy, whether it should be mandatory that two councillor, a sitting councillor sit on two appointed committees?
Through the chair to Counselor Cardinal, I don't have those details in front of me. I'm not familiar with that policy, I'm afraid. I don't know if somebody else is present that can speak to that. Otherwise, we would have to get back to you.
Well, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify a little bit, and then we got something to work with. I think that we've got it on documents, so... But, I just wanted to make it sure that it's fair to all councillors, that not one councillor gets to sit on five committees and then the others don't, you know, especially when there could be favoritism or, you know, that kind of stuff. Needs to be put in the policy, or amendment needs to be made of some sort where it doesn't get out of hand.
I think Council decides at the beginning of the term.
I know, I know, but it needs to be, it needs to be where, well, I could have four or five buddy councillors, and then I'm the guy sitting on five boards, you know what I mean?
Council makes that policy in September, or the new council would, I guess.
So, basically, I'm advising the administration to work on that prior to the next council coming in. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Cardinal. Counselor Weigl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recommended salary, does that put the councillors within the 75th percentile?
Through the chair to Counselor Weigl, that's correct. This, just for clarity, was based on the 2023 numbers, and when I re-engaged with the compensation specialist last year, she had indicated that the benchmarking across the groups that we had looked at, some of them had already increased. We would like to work on a policy that ensures that we're looking at this on a regular basis, so that it's not put in front of council necessarily, that it's something that we would automatically do that assessment, benchmarking across other jurisdictions.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Weigl. Counselor Doger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Counselor Cardinal bringing a valid point. Something is not very perfect, not only the council decided. I think, Mr. Mayor, you decided four times you gave housing to your friend, and at the same time.
I'm sorry, Counselor Doger, that is completely incorrect.
Thank you.
Yeah. Counselor Banjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman, and thank you CFO for the presentation. I would just go back to the point where I don't know if it's possible to have that clause there, so that we don't have to be part of this decision. It should be set such that we don't have to debate and all that. If there's, if it's possible, it's an uncomfortable discussion to have every time. So, I don't know if we need to add that to this, or it's going to be set up in future, that we don't have to come asking for 1%, 2%, whatever is applicable to everyone. I would love to see that happen. Thank you.
Through the chair to Counselor Banjoko, we will bring forward a policy to the new council with recommendations on how we would manage this in the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Counselor Banjoko. Counselor, who? Counselor Weigl?
Yeah, I guess it was just a follow-up question, Counselor Banjoko. Administration, or I guess Council could vote that administration come back and keep Council at the 75th percentile, continue on with market studies, or something along those lines, something you'd be talking about.
Through the chair to Counselor Weigl, that's correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Weigl. Counselor Cardinal?
Thanks, Mayor. Through the chair to Lori. According to the paper here, we're not, for the record, we're not the highest-paid municipality. We're the lowest. So...
Through the chair to Counselor Cardinal, that is correct.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that for the public. Thanks.
Yes.
Thanks, Counselor Cardinal. Counselor Bousier?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the chair to Lori, is there anything in this report or the FIN 050 regarding what constitutes attendance?
Through the chair to Counselor Bousier, I need to refresh my memory on that. I know we did discuss it. Just give me a moment.
And while you're looking, Lori, I don't know if there isn't. Does it matter if you're virtual?
I'll just jump in while you're looking for Lori.
I'm opposed to this whole increase anyways, but is there anything in here that states that you gotta be, have your bum in the seat? You can't be virtual, and you got at least three quarters of the meeting. Like, it says attendance. Well, our attendance is marked when we first come in, but there's nothing preventing someone from leaving every council-appointed meeting or...
Through the chair to the question, under section 3.3, there's section 3.3.1.2, the elected official must attend 80% of the meeting. And then, to your point, attendance is verified in the meeting minutes. So, if somebody was to show up and then leave after 10 minutes, then they wouldn't be remunerated. They wouldn't receive an honorarium for that time period.
Okay. Does that include regular council meetings as well, or just council-appointed?
No, this is specific to committees and boards, and the attended, the elected official attendance during that time.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Bousier. Counselor, any other questions? Counselor Cardinal? Oh. All right. Counselor Doger, do you have a question? Counselor Doger, are you present? I'm going to assume his hand is left up from before, and... Yeah. Right now, we can't continue the meeting. We should be in the meeting anyway. Shouldn't have to tell him. Counselor Doger? So, well, there you are. Counselor Doger, just so you know, we need you for quorum in the meeting, so when you leave, we have to stop the meeting?
Yes, please go ahead.
I said, we have to have you in the meeting for quorum, so when you leave the meeting, we need to stop the meeting. So, we need to let us know?
Oh, no. Sorry, I was just, somebody called me. Okay.
Yeah. Thanks. Does Counselor have any other questions? Counselor Cardinal, do you want to make the motion? That's why I said to someone you had to make the motion. Yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Cardinal.
You want to debate before the motion, eh? Oh, shoot. All right. Thanks, there, Mayor. I move that the elected officials' compensation, travel, and expenses policy, FIN 050, dated September 4th, 2025, as outlined in attachment two, be approved. That administration be directed to undertake a new market survey and conduct a policy review of elected officials' compensation, travel, and expenses policy, FIN 050 in 2026. The most... Oh, that's it.
Thanks, Counselor Cardinal. Thanks for the second. Counselor Weigl? Counselor, any discussion, comments, or debate points? Counselor Weigl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank administration for, on behalf of doing and re-looking back at this. It has been a long time. I do, what I do love about option two, and what you guys have come back with, is the per diem per meeting. What I do find is that it helps hold councilors accountable for showing up for meetings, as well as being there for the whole time. I do think that there should be something to the point of virtual eventually down the line. I know that in some cases, especially in, from councillors' forship, should, obviously, are exempt to something like that, especially due to weather, and there's extenuating circumstances. But, I do love to see that there is more accountability for councilors in their compensation, because as before, and just as public, just for public understanding, is that when somebody gets sanctioned... because as before, and just for public understanding, is that when somebody gets sanctioned or there's anything, there was no real actual repercussions. Where now, if you get sanctioned from committee in meetings, then you would actually lose compensation. So I think that's a great addition to this and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Weigl. Does any councillor have any other comments, discussion or debate points? Councillor Bousier?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Through the chair to Laurie, council compensation is the same whether you miss meetings or not. It's just the council-appointed, you lose $150.
Through the chair to councillor Bousier, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Cardinal?
Are we in debate?
Yes.
Oh, shoot.
Do you have any? You can still ask a question. If you have a question, go ahead.
This starts in January or? Oh, sorry, November 1st, okay, for the new council. Perfect.
Thanks councillor Cardinal. Does councillor have any other comments? Councillor Doger, you have a question or debate point? Does councillor have any other comments or debate points? I'll call for a vote. Councillor Doger, are you in favor? In favor, thank you. And that's carried five in favor. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have a report on, thanks Laurie, next, a report on flood mitigation, REACH 6, land acquisition. I'd like to invite project delivery and facility services to introduce a report, please. Yeah, we'll be seven and a half hours in.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Elliot White and I'm here representing administration with respect to two required land acquisitions for REACH 6 as part of our flood mitigation program. First, we'll be introducing you to the work that administration has completed over the last year. We'll provide some mapping of the areas in question and then we will provide some next steps. Oh, we are gonna pause. Okay, good evening. I'll just start from the beginning here. So, good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Elliot White and I'm here representing administration with respect to two required land acquisitions for REACH 6 as part of our flood mitigation program. So first, we'll introduce you to the work that administration has completed over the past year and we'll provide some mapping of the areas in question and then we'll provide you with the next step. So, overall, this map that we see here is the REACH 6 area. The red outline shows the general area which the REACH 6 will be located. And for context, to the upper left of the area, we have Walmart and then down below to the bottom right, we have Home Hardware. So REACH 6 stretches quite a bit of our waterfront. So in general, what we see here is that areas that are in blue are the RMWB-owned properties. And what we see here is in the middle, just between the river and Clearwater Drive is an area that is not blue. And this is the subject area that we're referring to today when I refer to Imperial Oil's land. To the right, along the bend of Clearwater Drive, where we see an area between Clearwater Drive and the river, that area would be considered or is Suncor's property that is not labeled in blue. So here's a couple of close-ups here. So this is Imperial Oil's property along Clearwater Drive. It's broken up into a series of parcels. And then this is Suncor's property along Clearwater Drive along the bend. So on the far left is the total Suncor property. In our particular case today, we're talking about securing an easement for the area that's shaped in black for the Suncor. So over the past year, we have been in close talks and negotiations with Imperial Oil and we've engaged Suncor Energy. With respect to Suncor lands, we require a portion of the land to place our berm on. Because Suncor wishes to retain ownership of their land, they wish to provide us with an easement. So that easement would be in the shape of the black within their properties. So what this easement is, is that that easement provides a right to another to use that land for a specified purpose. Easements are quite common tool that is used throughout the municipality and that easement will be placed on the parcel's title. So with respect to Imperial's land, I'm gonna go back one here. With respect to Imperial Oil's land, all of the land is contained within REACH 6 and we require all of it to construct our berm. We've negotiated a land deal between the RMWB and Imperial Oil. So we are here recommending to council that the RMWB secures a property easement with Suncor Energy, Inc. and acquires the Imperial Oil Limited property. The total approximate cost for both of these transactions is $2.8 million. With respect to Imperial Oil's property, the last time we spoke of this about a year ago, we talked about the fact that it's contaminated with historic contamination. So as per the law, the responsibility and liability of any contamination that exists prior to the purchase will remain with Imperial Oil. The site was partially remediated this summer to better facilitate the berm and subsequent use of the area. So I just also want to take an opportunity to thank Suncor and Imperial for completing, they each completed environmental site remediation on their sites this summer and at their cost. I also like to thank them for their work that they did and the diligence that they brought, professionalism that they brought and working with us and making sure that time was of an essence. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Elliot. Councillor Cardinal, have a question?
I do. Where's the map of the, when they were in media, oh, sorry, through the chair to Elliot. Thanks for your presentation, Elliot. Good job, man. All right, remediation, is there, did they share the remediation? I don't know what you call it, analytics results with you or just, does that come with the deal or?
Between the conversations we've had with Imperial, they've been quite open associated with their cleanup efforts. The final results of the test results, I don't believe we received to date. They've cleaned the top, basically the top portion of the land. There's still some deep contamination that exists on that property. But the way that we worked this land deal out is that it's suitable for its intended use, which is a berm, parking lots, things like that, that we would be using that area for.
Okay. So what it was two, can we split them up in numbers? What's Suncor's number?
Yeah, okay. So the reason why we didn't necessarily break them up in this public forum is that we're still in the middle of, in negotiations with both parties. And so we didn't necessarily want to present the numbers publicly. So if there's a desire by council to have those numbers, I can certainly provide those in an in-camera opportunity, so.
How much has the mayor been involved with negotiations at all?
Through the chair to the question, was that the mayor?
Yeah.
I don't know exactly if the mayor was in the details that say the working group was in. He may have been in conversations with higher-level folks within the organization, but I'd rather him speak to that directly.
I don't negotiate any land deals.
Okay.
But I was in communications with Suncor Imperial about it, to advocate for us.
I just think that there's a better path forward myself because that was all indigenous people that used to live there in a spirit of reconciliation. I think there can be a compromise to this because, you know, the settlers that used to live there before, prior to oil being struck here. I think that at some point, maybe we can negotiate some sort of a better path forward with them because it's a community initiative. It's also, it's to protect not only Fort McNamarae downtown but probably some of their facilities as well from a flood. So maybe we could circle back to that. I think we can do better, to be honest. And having that discussion, maybe it needs to be done. That's my advice and opinion. I think that'd be, I think that actually.
Once we get to debate, councillor Cardinal? Just right now, just get questions and once we get the motion on the floor. Councillor Doger, or do you have another question, councillor?
I do, actually, about the easement. What's the, why the easement? Did you say why the easement? I forgot.
Through the chair to the question. No, maybe I didn't explain. So Suncor wished to keep their property. They felt that they had a responsibility to maintain the property. The portion that they're maintaining will also have some historical contamination. That's why we saw some cleanup this summer. So they just wanted to keep their property and give us an easement.
Perfect. Doesn't make too much sense, but thanks.
Thanks councillor Cardinal. Councillor Doger? I think you're on mute, councillor Doger.
Sorry, sorry, my fault. I have certain observations also. If you allow me to speak now or towards the end, you let me speak.
Right now, be questions councillor Doger and after the motion's on the floor, you can debate or discuss. I think he's gonna wait. Do we have any questions for the administration? Do we have any delegates this item? Okay, go ahead councillor Cardinal.
Can I ask who communications are with Suncor and Imperial or? So I'd like to know.
That information can be provided. I personally don't have that information. We have Dennis from our administration that was working diligently along with other members of administration. So we can provide that information to you.
I'll send the email right now and then.
Sure, absolutely.
I think we can do better. Thanks.
Thanks councillor Cardinal. Do you have any other questions for administration? Not seeing any, can I have some make the motion? Councillor Weigl?
I move that administration secure property easement with Suncor Energy Block 2, Plan 4569 KS within the REACH 6 project limits. And that 2, the administration acquire Imperial Oil Limited property, lots 1 to 13 and 16 to 34, Block 2, Plan 6344AY within the REACH 6 project limits. And 3, that funding for both the easement and the land acquisition amount withheld per to section 30 in brackets 1 of the Access to Information Act disclose harmful to economic and other interests of the public body be allocated from the approved capital budget, project budget, land acquisitions 2021.
Thanks councillor Weigl and thanks for the second councillor Bousier. Does councillor have any debate, discussion or comments? Councillor Doger?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first observation is last time on this presentation by Mr. Elliot, Mr. White, though it's a very nice presentation and speaks of his competency, what I requested in that I want to, twice I went to see the work going on, but I was not given access to it and he said that we'll do it in future. I can again remind it. Secondly, my observation is about the, councillor Cardinal is asking very nice observation, giving very nice observations that the mayor should be, and you said that I am not in the bargaining and deal. You are number one, sir. By virtue of your position, if you do not provide these things or you are not in picture, I think you are going back from your authority. And I feel bad about it as to one of the team members.
Do you have anything related to this motion, councillor Doger?
No, it is observations on the, that you should be like bargains or deals. So this is what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any councillor have any comments, discussion or debate points? Councillor Cardinal? Oh, sorry, Kendrick, go ahead.
Well, I won't be supporting the motion because of what I just mentioned. I think that we meet as leaders face-to-face and we have discussions about this. I know that this was in the process, but I didn't know whether or not we would have a say, except in council chambers. But at some point, I think that we could actually do a little better than, and do a little better and get it lowered or possibly just given back to us for a monetary value of $1. And I think that at least trying that route and asking about it and creating a document that states that, you know, with all that goes on with indigenous communities and speculation on how the pollution and things happen in our region alongside the river and it being remediated and, you know, the list goes on with those kind of things. And I think that we could actually, you know, get the support of the local nations in this community here that have lived along the river and have their support through us in the spirit of reconciliation. I think that would make a big difference for our plea to have it passed over and then we could utilize that fund, those $2.8 million towards, you know, the 55-plus games of some sort and save a little bit of money. I think it'd be something that we can actually take the time to look into. We're not no entire rush at this point, I don't think because the season for flood mitigation is ongoing and obviously the water levels have been very, very low lately. And unfortunately, 2020 was, you know, drastic to our region. But I think we could actually take the time and not rush into this and do a little more work and make sure. and, uh, make sure that we, uh, get the best, uh, option that we could, uh, do as a municipality. I won't be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Councilor Cardinals. Does anyone have any other comments, discussion, debate points? Not seeing any, so I'll call for a vote. Uh, Councilor Dogar? In favor, thank you. Someone missing? Did you vote? Councilman Joko, do you vote? You did? Oh, you did, okay. And that's carried, uh, four to two, thank you, everyone. Uh, moving on to number eight, Council's motions. Uh, we're gonna take, actually, let's take a ten minute break. And we'll come back at nine fifty-five, eight fifty-five, eight fifty-five. Welcome back, everyone. Moving on to number eight, Council's motions. I'll ask Councilman Joko to read her motion. Uh, I'm sorry, Councilman Joko, Councilor Dogar, could you, uh, mute your mic, please? Councilor Dogar? Councilor Dogar, if you could mute your mic? Thank you. Go ahead, Councilman Joko.
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. I move that creation of a new funding stream within the community investment program, CIP, be considered specifically aimed at empowering youth to create positive community impact. And that administration include twenty thousand dollars for this new fund, funding stream as a pilot program in the two thousand twenty-six budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Joko. Do we have a seconder for that? Seconded by Councilor Wagle, thank you, Councilor Wagle. Councilman Joko, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman. I am, uh, very happy to bring this motion forward, um, as it is aimed at empowering our young ones. Um, it's gonna be, I mean, I've looked into this and this, what other municipalities and cities are doing um, to support innovative, uh, projects, short-term projects, uh, seed funding and equipment for youths. Uh, for most cities that I checked out, um, will be from ages, uh, twelve to eighteen. I think it's important that we start, uh, you know, sowing the seed in the, in the, in the kids, uh, so that they think outside the box and get creative. The world is changing, um, and these kids have a lot of talent. Uh, the amount we are talking about is about, what I've seen is about three hundred dollars, uh, per kid. And there are different methods, uh, different ways of implementing this. And I do not want to go into the details of implementation. I just want administration to look into this and bring it back, uh, for, for, I mean, bring this up, add it to have a, a, a budget of twenty thousand, uh, to fund this and see how it goes, uh, do a pilot test run and then we can, uh, check the effectiveness of, of the program.
Thanks, Councilman Joko. Do we have any delegates this item? Uh, we have one delegate, but they're not in attendance. Um, so I'll start questions. So, Councilman Joko, how would you anticipate what kind of program that this would, uh, help? So it's twenty thousand dollars max for the whole program. What would the three hundred dollar program look like?
Um, it would look like what maybe an adult can do with, uh, much more, but maybe like small science, pro- science projects or little trading during summer or things of that nature. And I believe administration must have, uh, done some work in, in the research and maybe they can share some more. But most of what, most of what I saw were things like three hundred dollars seed money and innovative, uh, ideas, um, by kids.
Okay, maybe community service can answer as well, because my concern is that CIP programs open to the registered social profits.
Okay. And then, uh, what I saw with the two ways of implementing this, uh, one could be direct to the individual kids or through a CIP funding stream, through organizations that can work with the kids, something like that. And this could include, uh, schools. And I also thought about McCoy, uh, mayor and councils, yes.
Through the chair to Councilor Ben Joko, thank you for bringing this forward and for providing some clarity in your statements. We have some questions. We have done some research on similar types of grants and whether a grant like this is needed in the community. So our questions remain around, um, direction from council regarding designing and delivering this grant. So you had mentioned a potential age range. We also need to clarify if it would be for an individual or group, if there's a limit of, um, one child per household or if there's any exclusion criteria around that. If there's an inclusion or exclusion of business or nonprofit or school applicants, uh, for school projects, because that would be out of the scope typically for, for the community investment program. Anything that's educational related is ineligible. So we would recommend aligning it with the eligibility of the CIP grants. Uh, we also look for direction on the fund dispersment method. So you had mentioned possibly giving the funds to a child or to a school. Um, many youth may not have a bank account. And I'll get into some of the questions we have around fund dispersment more. But additionally, we're looking for clarity on grant oversight. So would there be reporting and alignment with existing community grant frameworks? So we're asking what mechanism council has to ensure that the youth grant funds are securely and equitably dispersed, especially to youth, like I mentioned, without bank accounts, while maintaining accountability and ensuring the funds are used for sole, the sole purpose of the project. So for example, if, um, we have to pay the parent or family member, um, how do we ensure accountability to how those funds were used? If the grant is recommended or is approved tonight, we may requ- require a third party fiduciary agent, so a fiscal agent who can take the funds for the youth. And that could be partnering with a school, youth-serving agency or direct vendor payment for services that are provided for the initiative. So instead of paying the youth, perhaps we would pay a vendor that works with that youth. And then lastly, we, we need clarity around accountability mechanisms, um, for the effectiveness and transparency. So without, without clear guidelines, it will be difficult to implement and know that we're measuring what you're asking for. Um, we don't have funding priorities for this grant stream identified. And our, our two thousand twenty-six grants have opened as of, uh, yesterday. So we would be doing this outside of that grant cycle, um, with needing to develop guidelines. So we want to make sure that it's very clear for the applicants, what is eligible, what is not eligible, who is eligible and who is not eligible. Um, there's a lot of considerations.
Thank you, Janelle. Uh, Councilor Wagle?
Thank you. It was gonna be around the same thing. Could we, Councilman Joko, would you be open to reframing this? Um, to giving it to the administration to build a framework for something like this versus us trying to prescribe what it might look like? I love the idea of empowering the youth and bringing them into the idea. But I think there's a lot of framework to make it equitable and make sure that it's fair. Last thing we want is a lot of kids coming after this, not being able to be eligible, what it is. And so I love the idea, but if we could give it back to them for the framework to bring back forward, I think would be a great idea.
Thank you councillor Wagle and I totally agree with that idea. No, I don't even have the expertise to prescribe and tell them exactly how to do it. I've been learning a lot about this and I'm still learning. I just like the idea and so I would love administration to do it. I have no expertise in this field. My baby is 26.
Councillor Cardinal?
No, I just quantized the question in numbers, right? Did you just keep giving out 50, 60 or is it 5, 10? What's the number?
So through the conversation councillor Benjoko, are you looking at amending this in any way?
I'm able to, making amends to this. At this point, definitely we can't be putting the figures, I'm talking about budget. I think there's work to be done and I would like administration to look into it. Maybe Jade can help us change the wording to what makes better sense. We can get started. I don't know how soon we can implement, but at least we can start engaging our youths positively and I can attest to it firsthand that when kids are busy, good things happen.
Councillor Benjoko, get your withdraw this motion and put in no motion forward.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay.
Okay, with Ms Jade? Okay. Please, maybe we take three minutes break? Oh, okay, it's ready? Okay. Is it here? Oh, okay. Okay. So do I have to withdraw the other? Okay, so with the consent of my colleagues, I would withdraw and replace my motion with the following. The administration review and bring forward a framework that supports the creation of a new funding stream within the Community Investment Programme specifically aimed at empowering youth to create a positive community impact. Thank you.
Thank councillor Benjoko and thanks for the second. Councillor Broussier, council of any questions, comments or debate points? I'm not seeing as well call for a vote in favor online councillor Dogar? Thank you. In favor? That's Karen Adams. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to Clean Energy Incentives Programme, last councillor Benjoko?
Thank you Mayor Boomer. At this point, I'm running out of gas. I'm not, I'm not able to continue with that motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. It's withdrawn, yeah. Moving to Regional Recreation Corp, post-event traffic flow mitigation, I'll ask councillor Dogar to read out his motion. Councillor Dogar?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This is the motion that is about the lane.
This is the three-lane traffic motion you made.
So should I give my premise?
Need you to read the motion.
The motion, sorry, it's not with me however. I present that...
I still need you to read the motion. You don't have an agenda? It'd be on your screen, it'd be on your screen of your, following along with your council meeting or your paper agenda you're given here tonight.
I request...
Page 19? It's shared on your screen. Can you see it on the screen there?
Motion that, yes, yes, yeah, thank you. That a three-lane exit strategy be considered for future large-scale events hosted by partnership with RRC with support of traffic lights or temporary signet to manage lane openings and closure efficiently.
Thanks councillor Dogar.
Okay, to support the motion, I give the...
No one seconded yet, well, hold on. Why does it say you moved it? Thanks councillor Dogar, if you want to speak to that?
Yes, thank you. Also I was seconded, thank you very much. You see, on Canada Day, after the fireworks, I was standing in route close to the bridge at the end of Franklin to greet the people for Canada Day. Those were the happy moments of my community. I wanted to share those to them and I noticed that it took one hour, five minutes from first vehicle to the last vehicle. In the two lanes which were going towards Franklin and to the town, they were absolutely busy bumper to bumper. On the other two lanes were totally empty. So that's why I put up the motion that there should be a three-lane strategy, maybe with the lights or even the signets can also do it. It's very simple and the public can trust. Thank you very much.
Thanks councillor Dogar. Do we have any delegates for this item? We have no delegates. Do anyone have any questions, comments or debate points? Councillor Cardinal?
I have a question, Dogar, about, you're talking about end of Franklin, north side or south side?
Surely north side, close to the bridge.
Okay, so north side coming to the RRC?
Yeah, north side of the Franklin and it's close to the bridge, I said. And in other words, the end of that road where the road of the RRC terminates.
Don't we already have lights there?
Excuse me?
We already have, we already have lights just before the bridge.
No, probably, my dear, you didn't understand, it's a lane strategy to close one lane, open one lane and three lanes open towards the desired direction in which traffic is going. Two lanes are already working bumper to bumper and the other two lanes which are going towards the east and that one lane could be, could be put off and the traffic should come from the back island in three lanes.
So this happened on Canada Day?
Yeah, it's Canada Day or the big functions. There could be many big function in the sports or concentration concerts and, you know, one hour waiting, you know, it is, it is very bad, very disgusting. People want to go to their homes at the end of the function, every event, they want to go back, one hour waiting there, it's just not on.
I, so you want us to close? No, not add one lane on specific days of functions?
Yes, you know, it, they know it, when are the big functions? And the two lanes are going to the back island and two are coming, or going to two east and two towards west. And they can, while coming out, while going in, it's not much of a problem. And because people are going in phases, one by one, but while coming out, there's a sudden blast and sudden people come out, so there's a great rush. That's why while going out, yeah, every function, every concert or Canada Day, there should be three lanes opening towards the downtown.
Okay, I guess my next question would be accident wise, how many accidents have happened and is it a safety concern?
I don't think so, just safety concern. I think in Edmonton, I've seen many places due to, because of the lights in the morning, it's a different lane. In the evening, there's a different lane.
We're debating?
You know, this is how people manage it.
Okay, well, I think it's pretty good the way it is, Dogar, and I won't be supporting this motion. Sorry.
Thanks councillor Cardinal. Any other comments, questions, debate points, council? Councillor Broussier?
Yeah, thank you Mayor. Through the chair to the CEO, do we have a policy in place for large events when they exit Mack Island? Do we get police involved or bylaw to direct traffic?
Yeah, through the chair to councillor Broussier, we don't have a policy per se, but it is certainly something that we commonly do, work with the event coordinator and in this case the RRC and involve RCMP bylaw to, for traffic control and with the ultimate goal of safety. If I can just add into the conversation, I just caution council to leave the operations and the direction, or I guess the duties of a peace officer to help manage that peace. And, you know, depending on the event, those options are available to us. So the idea of, I understand councillor Dogar's request here where is you've got two lanes going one way, two lanes going the other way in normal conditions. What he's suggesting is the two lanes exiting as well as shutting down one lane in the inbound to Mack Island and turning it to an outbound. So that would, now we're, now we're starting to address, starting to have some safety concerns and at all times, we need to make sure we have access into the island for emergencies, that sort of thing. So, yeah, I would, I would have, I would leave that to the, to the role of the events coordinator and the, our officers or peace officers.
Okay, and that's why I asked, so my question to councillor Dogar, was there security or bylaw or RCMP directing traffic after the event you're speaking about?
No, no, the spot where I was standing, there was none. Maybe to start with, they must have been there. I feel that just sort of lighting, it could be easily controlled and it is only the problem at the start. Problem was little concern, as pointed out by CEO.
Okay, I guess so, through the chair back to Jody. So who determines whether we're going to have, is it the RRC determines that or the municipality? Like you see it all the time in events, like you go at any event, you'll get a one-way street that is going the other way so they can exit traffic out of the arena or stadium, like, so?
Yeah, more commonly, and we can look at any kind of a, I guess, an NHL game if we've all been to one of those, they're not shutting down streets or laneways, they're having peace officers take over the intersections and the lights to eat, to keep traffic flowing in a, in a certain direction. That would creates, you know, the efficiency. So to your original question there, it's typically the request of the events coordinator to recognize the amount of volume on the, on the site and in this case Mack Island. And obviously, or absolutely, there's always an open and willingness to help and assist there and when the event is over to assist. This is a short period of time.
Right.
And so, yep, always willing to do that. I think, to the, to the councillor Dogar's point there and I, I can, I think he's referring to the summer festival, summer festival, I think, events.
Yeah, it was a Canada Day one.
Yeah, we definitely had those open conversations with RRC, but the attendance wasn't as full capacity, so the ticket sales were at half. So I think that they, there was a pullback on that amount of traffic control that was required.
Okay, thank you.
That's, excuse me, one thing I can make submitted. Mr Mayor, would you allow me?
Go ahead.
Thank you. The reply to honourable Lance Bousier, you know, who controls in Edmonton? In the morning, there are three lanes going up towards downtown. In the evening, three lanes coming down. So automatically lights, you know, flash in that way. But here, it's once in a while, once a big function is there, of course, Karagosh, the director, he would decide it, not every, very often. Thank you.
Councillor Benjoko?
Thank you Mayor Boomer and thank you councillor Dogar for, for bringing up the motion. My concern is just the blocking of one lane or changing the direction of one lane. I have lived in some countries, which I don't want to mention names, where things like that happen and it could be chaotic. And so that's the, I have concern about that. And I think that's one of the good things about, about Canada. So I'm a bit uneasy about having the traffic go the opposite direction that drivers are used to because it could cause another problem. That's my only comment about that. Thank you again councillor.
Thanks councillor Benjoko.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Again, please.
Go ahead.
Mr Mayor, I, as a trucker, had been driving all around North America, in Canada also, in USA also. I have multiple places I've seen the lanes controlled by the lights. It's very much, very much safe. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Dogar. Any other questions or comments from council? I don't see any, so I won't be supporting this because I think you're just looking at those lanes, you're going to run one lane directly into oncoming traffic from Franklin Avenue. No matter which way you change the lights, Franklin Avenue won't be changed. You would have to, I think we would be in a lot more problems and I think it's been pretty good. So councillor Dogar, do you have any closing statements?
Thank you very much. My closing statement is we should take the opinion of the police also, traffic police also, and then with that input, for the time being, we can postpone it and then we can do the voting. Thank you.
We'll be voting now, we have your motion on the floor. So with that, thanks councillor Dogar, appreciate the motion, we'll call for a vote. All in favor online councillor Dogar?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's defeated with one in favor. Moving on to full-time councillors, I'll ask councillor Dogar again to read out his motion for full-time councillors.
Mr Mayor, I will discuss it in the next meeting. Today, I'm not all that feeling well. Thank you.
We have two delegates here that have waited here since five o'clock councillor Dogar. They've waited here since five o'clock to speak to this motion. Would you like to just do it now?
No, thank you very much. That the, we don't want to put our residents in inconvenience. Surely my thoughts are not very much synchronized or very much in order.
Yeah, it's your responsibility as a councillor to show up organized and you've had this motion off and on the books for six to eight months. There's just two, two residents that have waited here now for almost five hours.
Okay, okay. I will not disappoint my residents. They are very dear to me every time and particularly in this, this time of the fourth year.
Okay, do you want to read your motion then?
Please flash it, I don't have the, uh, I think it will help me out that I read it out.
It should be on your screen.
Yes, now it is on my screen. The position of councillor become full-time for the incoming 2025, 29 council, and the council be made made up of seven councillors plus mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Dogar, would you like to speak to your motion? Yeah.
Oh, thank you, whoever has supported it. First of all, whenever I talked about these lines, everybody said you want to make money and you know, you put up, ask for the money in the past also, let me make it very clearly on air, that even last time, uh, with Cardinal's motion, nobody
Uh, Councilor Dogar, can you speak to the motion you have on the floor?
Oh, yes, it is pertinent to the motion, it is the
Yeah, we'd like you to speak to the motion you have on the floor, please.
The, uh, Mr. Mayor, let me speak out, please. Don't take me as a stepson. Okay, uh, the idea is that we are not want to raise money unnecessarily. But the idea is that, uh, you know, 625 million that budget is, and, uh, about 1,500 employees are working. We have to see whether we are doing full justice with our duties or not. Once I read duties, I read it today and before also, it is the welfare. And welfare has a very wide scope, different definitions, and the definition which suits me for this motion is that we should, uh, we should look after, uh, the residents to the best of their, our abilities. Uh, with joining their happy and, um, you know, difficult moments also. You know, as far as legislation is concerned, we're doing quite a bit. But that is not sufficient. You know, I see, no, this is the second job people are doing it. Um, they're doing one and a half job, getting salary of one and a half, and also the authority, extra authority. So this, uh, job is something which is of second priority. First priority, everybody goes for his own job. Some people miss it, somebody goes, um, prematurely leave it, somebody, you know, a number of online. They are not as serious as a full-time is. Like you see, Mr. Mayor is every time there, full-time there. And Jade Brown is every time there, and Sheo is everything, full-time, there's a lot of priorities. Here, every time, you know, there are important events that we miss. The Jamburi, uh, that administration, uh, the lunch, Jamburi was the, I think, name. 1,500 people are there and we were only one councillor and mayor. Oh, this is not on, we should pay them given respect, that maximum, because they were busy, they didn't have the time. Another other event I noted, once home depot, people all over Canada came, they're high up ups from Toronto to Vancouver, the regional chief and all chiefs were there. And, uh, we were only one or two with mayor, and you know how mayor came that he knows it. I did not, uh, repeat it. But you know, our priorities are on, I put up a motion that, um, 45 million is being spent on, uh, community investment programs. We should also, uh, not as a policeman, not as a auditor, but just as a colleague, we should go and see and monitor it. You know, uh, United Way, they are 18 million only, and they follow, uh, for, against their, follow their dollars. And why are we are not following the taxpayers' money? Even a single dollar is there, we should be, uh, it should taken a counter far and we should follow it. Um, and the same, uh, other things also see, that we are not doing full justice. And, uh, let me think, one or two more points, that, uh, one man can do only one thing at a time, and you reduce the number, is the budget is difficult. I said seven councillors, and if one councillor may be removed from Ward One, he won from Ward Two. Ward Three, in any case, is close by, would love to have Stu Wegel with us, he's a very competent and one of the best councillors. And so, th- three councillors will be dropped. And see, this is how full-time, and we have to share their feelings also, happiness. The welfare definition comprises of the happiness and sad events also. On Christmas, I have seen, there's the biggest lunch or dinner, uh, lunch at, uh, Knights of Columbus. First time attended with Lance Buzier and his wife. And every time, and whenever I'm here in the Christmas, I attended, and there was only one councillor. This time I was deputy mayor and I was only one. Nobody showed up there, 500, 600 people they arranged for, and we have not there to share the feelings. And the lightning also, I have been going around and by many houses I visited. We should share the feelings of our people. Uh, same way in the community events, only one or there or two is there, there should be more participation. In the events, it's written in the book, more participation. And in the difficult time, when the evacuation was there, Abba Sand and Beacon Hill, you know, I followed it, and others were busy. And people were asking me, um, where is that man and that guy? I just said they're busy in different jobs. With all this, I feel that, uh, uh, you see, to do a full justice with the welfare and look after our community, there should be full-time council with seven councillors, thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilor Dogar. Uh, just have a quick question for administration before we go on. Does council have the ability to change the number of councillors? I don't know, Jade, if you can answer that, or Bean Gole, or anybody?
Through the chair, um, I'll defer this question to legal services. Um, I believe this is restricted in the Order of Council that created the Regional Municipality of Wood Buffalo, but they can answer.
Uh, that is correct. The Order of Council that created the Regional Municipality of Wood Buffalo has set the number of councillors at 10. Six urban, four rural, and has specified that six of them must be from the urban service area, two from the north rural service area, one from central and one from south. We do not have the ability to modify that. In order to do so, it has to come from a new Order of Council from the Minister.
Thank you, Patrick.
Let them work.
So we'll go to delegates, um, Okto, do you wanna go first? Thanks for hanging around. Just wanna introduce yourself and, uh, to have, and then when you finish speaking, just remain seated for questions, please.
Hi, my name is Okto Bishop, and I'll be speaking in opposition. My apologies, um, most of my presentation was centered around moving, removing positions, so wait, be all right if I just continue? Okay, before addressing the issue of full-time, I would like to take a moment to highlight how egregious of a suggestion is to lessen the number of councillors as a method of affording the switch, as well as why I feel like is a lack of proper ability to hear citizens' feedback. Removing positions is nothing short of silencing citizens' voices. Our region encompasses 60,844 square kilometers. Losing seats would mean additional stress on remaining council members, and higher tensions come future elections. When candidates get drowned out and discouraged by the increased competition, especially in Ward One, not only are you pulling the rug out from under people currently running, you are leaving them to be mobbed by an upset population. You are able to walk away from this and go to whatever futures you please, and they are left to pick up the pieces of this administration, work to rebuild the public's trust. What of the people who have been investing so much time and energy to their campaigns? If this passes and they're unable to sustain full-time, are they going to have to just give it all up over a change that they didn't ask for? Are we potentially remitting those who may be well-suited for council, but are unable to sustain full-time, whether due to life commitments, disability, or any other number of perfectly valid reasons? A mere 27.2% of eligible voters cast a ballot in the last municipal election. Though it's an issue in all regions, it's especially an issue in ours with our large population of fly-in, fly-out employees, not to mention the new requirement to register, combined with the seeming apathy for civic participation I've seen in so many people. May I point to over a year ago, when this was brought up, multiple of you noted how unfair it was to not give a chance for feedback, and yet this is the chance we are given. I have spent months revising this to try to fit in the narrow window I am given to speak. I cannot possibly contain the multitudes of points I have, nor the nuance needed for each of them. This is not a small change, whether you see it as that or not. You cannot make such a major decision at the end of your cycles without the elaboration of any details, let alone the time to discuss them, especially when so many concerns, both from citizens and members of this council, have not been addressed. This will create career politicians, people spending their whole lives in public office, out of touch with struggles their constituents may face, deciding between bills or putting food on the table because they can vote to give themselves a raise. The cheek, the nerve, the gall, the audacity and the gumption, there are more costs associated with this change than just an increase in wages. Future council members could want to expense more, seeing anything they do as an opportunity for reimbursement, rather than a chance to learn, grow and connect with their community. How are councillors in rural communities expected to handle this? How do you intend to measure contributions and adherence to full-time work? Who will draft the policy surrounding the new changes? Will assistants be hired? Will there be any public input on any of it? I can assume not, as the last public meeting of this council is in a mere five days, which would have been the night you are deciding if this hadn't been moved up. This is nothing more than a maladroit attempt to shove through a decision that completely changes the function of council without any proper discussions or public input because of how the issue continues to be brought forward and rescinded. There are already varying degrees of effort put in by council members that would only be exacerbated by full-time, let alone the continuous issue of professional conduct. I truly have no polite way I can phrase this, I've seen circus acts behave in a better manner. I personally do not care what you wear, how you speak, or what else you are doing while attending the meeting, within reason. So long as you act in a way that reflects well on the region. Show up to the meeting in a dinosaur costume for all I care, just read the agenda beforehand and maintain the rules of the MGA with some level of decorum. Of course, I have no issues with friendly gestures or not being aggressively formal, I love engaging in clownery. It's just I think it needs to be balanced with the ability to remain professional. I cannot be expected to support the idea of having this council voting on it being a full-time job when there are those that barely respect it as a part-time one. You would expect with four years in this position, there wouldn't need to be continuous points of order called or procedures explained. I had such high hopes when getting into following local politics. I'm not going to entertain drama, chaos and confusion, I've had it officially.
Well, Okto? I always appreciate when you come to speak, today especially, but I hope you have a, a future lined up in public speaking, 'cause you're phenomenal, and maybe apply for a job here with our, our, uh, our communications, 'cause that was an amazing speech, thank you so much. Uh, does anyone have any questions? Councilor Benjoko?
Thank you, Mayor Bowman, and I just want to commend you as well. That was well thought, thought out, written out, ready, and, uh, I enjoyed listening to you and the fact that you, you followed this process, you know, what this is about, and your points are valued, and I just want to say I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilman Joko. Have any other questions for the presenter? I'm not seeing any, so thank you, I really appreciate it, and thanks for sticking around tonight. Uh, next up, we have Ty Brant. And Ty, just say your name for the record, and just remain seated for questions after, please.
There we go. Sorry, I get nervous in large crowds. Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Ty Brant, and thank you for the opportunity to address council tonight. This motion's been brought forward multiple times, and I've been here multiple times for it, so I'm kinda content that I get to speak on it, but sad that I have to. I'm here to basically urge that we maintain part-time status of our council, a decision that upholds cost-effectiveness, diverse representation, fairness to candidates, and ethical government, values that define our Fort McMurray community. Uh, first, cost-effectiveness, transitioning to a full-time council could add over 1 million annually in salaries and benefits for our municipality, with a pre-census estimate of 72,000. This is a significant burden on taxpayers, especially given the volatility of our oil and, oil and gas-driven economy. Other municipalities our size, like Red Deer, Grand Prairie, govern effectively with part-time council at a fraction of the cost. We can do the same, ensuring fiscal responsibility. Second, diverse representation. A part-time council allows members to maintain other professional or community roles, bringing varied perspectives to this chamber. In RMWB, this includes not only those in oil and gas, but also educators, small business owners, healthcare workers, community leaders with demanding careers. A full-time council risks excluding these voices, narrowing the diversity that strengthens our decision-making and reflects our community's unique identity. Third, it's fairness to candidates. Candidate registration for the October 2025 election opened in January of this year. As of this afternoon, 21 individuals have already stepped forward, paid the fee, started campaigning and raising money, expecting a part-time role. Changing to full-time status now, less than two months before the election, would alter the role's demands mid-campaign, betraying the community's trust and undermining our democratic process. If we consider full-time status, it must start with a new term, ensuring candidates and voters have clarity about the role's expectations. Finally, ethical governance demands transparency. Last year's June 2024 attempt to switch to full-time status through a surprise 6 to 3 vote, without proper notice or consultation, sparked rightful public backlash. The reversal on July 3rd with an 8 to 3 vote showed this council's ability to listen. Let's build on that lesson. Any future discussion of full-time status must involve robust public consultation, not something that ends up at 10 o'clock at night. And it must align with the election cycle to honor our democratic values. Maintaining part-time status is the right choice. It respects our taxpayers, preserves, preserves diverse voices, honors candidates who registered in January, and upholds the trust our community places in us. I urge you to affirm our part-time council, and if change is considered, commit to a transparent process, starting with a new term. Thank you for your time and dedication to our community.
Thanks, Ty, appreciate you sticking around, well, every night, especially tonight, um, and giving the chance to speak. Uh, do you have any questions for the presenter? I'm not seeing any, great job, thanks, Ty.
Thank you.
Uh, so with that, we'll just call for a vote. Councilor Dogar in favor?
Yes.
And that's defeated with one in favor. Thanks, everyone. Uh, with that, that concludes this evening's meeting. Have a good weekend, we'll see you back on Tuesday. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Um, thanks everyone for coming.